The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special board meeting. I'd like to begin by taking roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that?
Absolutely. Good evening, Shelton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Andon Hubel.
Here.
Sit Nakal.
Rhonda, we didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, here.
Becker.
Here.
And McCoy.
Here.
All seven board members are present. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to move into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851c, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit superintendent's performance evaluation.
Second.
Beth?
Smith.
Hi.
Hi.
Andon Hubel.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Sit Nakal.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
All right, pass 7-0. We will go into closed session. We'll see you all back at 6 o'clock.
You at 6.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this school board meeting to order. We'll start by doing a roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening. Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Hi, here.
Shelton.
Here.
Sit Nakal.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Andon Hubel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Excellent. All seven board members are present. We are also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly along with members of his cabinet. We are also honored to be joined by two members of the InterCity Student Council, Brayden Freiberg and Greta Hansen, both from Southwest High School. Thank you for joining us, Brayden and Greta. Next on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance. Josh, if you could get the flag up for us, and I will recite the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Next, we have our district mission statement, and tonight that will be read by trustee Sit Nakal.
Thanks, Eric. Just trying to read it off my phone for just, just give me one second.
Yeah, no problem.
"We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world."
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are collaborative commitments. As a reminder, these are statements or commitments that the board made a while ago now on how we want to conduct ourselves during school board meetings. Unless there's an objection from everyone else on the board, I would just suggest that we we keep these in mind, we reference them, but we will refrain from going around and reading. All right, that carries us on to the open forum section of our agenda. With that, we'll start with the InterCity Student Council report, and so I'll hand it over to Brayden and Greta.
Okay, I can go first.
Thank you.
So, for good news from East High School, they're having a food drive that's sponsored by the student council that'll be held on December 16, and their transition into second semester went really smoothly.
Jadeal held a student, held a town hall meeting with with students to voice their concerns and their pluses on the online school format. So their personal student council will be working with the students to try and address those.
For Preble High School, they're having an update on an upcoming cookie decorating contest, and their DECA team, student council, Link Crew, Key Club, and NHS held a toy drive for Foster the Village from the 10th to the 12th, and the turnout was really good. And DECA projects are underway, specifically the Boots for Kids and Sprout Initiative projects.
Southwest High School, their student council is holding Kahoot games every so often on Fridays that everyone in the school can join. So just to get some more cohesion and community, decided to just do some Kahoot games every so often, so you could get like this, an email will be sent out, and then a bunch of students can join. And also, Southwest figured out a way to somehow get somewhat of a musical together. It'll be happening in a virtual format similar to Preble, how Preble is doing it.
All right, and then finally, West is having different holiday contests, contests like cookie decorating sweaters and do-it-yourselfs, and they're all being held with gift card rewards.
Great, thank you, Greta. Brayden, question for you. Would school board members be able to participate in those Kahoot contests? Maybe look into that.
I think so.
All right, look into that for us. If you can send an invite our way, I'd love to participate.
Absolutely. I am on that team that creates those.
Excellent, that'd be fun. All right, thank you for that report. Takes us next to recognition. We have one item tonight that I think is pretty remarkable. We'd like to recognize Board Treasurer Andrew Becker for his 20 years of service. We received a letter from WASB acknowledging Andrew's 20 years of service to the Green Bay area Public School District, our students and our staff. And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize that service to our community. So thank you very much, Andrew.
Thank you. Again. My letter said there was gonna be a plaque. Is that, is that, what's, I mean, that out of the way, or did Steve have that, or how are we doing?
In the mail, in the mail, Andrew. Yes, they said it's on its way to us, and as soon as we get that, we will make sure and get that to you right away.
Okay. I'm not making it up. I really did get a letter that said, "Thank you, and we're sending a plaque," so.
Yeah, the letter is attached, so I can, I can vote for you.
Certainly, um, I certainly didn't think when I started, over two programs that were cut when I was in high school, that I would be here for 20 years, but certainly has, certainly has been quite the, quite the experience, a lot of changes in 20 years. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right, um, so the final item under open forum is our public forum. We have a number of people who have registered to speak. I've been working with Josh to try to find a way to streamline this, but we'll go through the process. I believe we have 16 phone calls. So Josh, without further ado, I'll let you do what you do, and I'll introduce people as they come on. It looks like, Lydia, can you hear me? Oh, she was there.
Are we losing her?
I don't see her box anymore, but maybe.
I'm gonna call her right back. She was there for a while.
Yeah, yeah. Just to reiterate to people, if you're waiting for a phone call tonight, the phone caller ID on your phone will look like it's coming from another state. That's because of our Hi, Lydia, thank you. Sorry, we lost you there for a minute.
Great, well, I'm glad that I'm here now, and thank you for taking my call.
Yeah, if you could just start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Is the volume okay?
Yep, you're good. Oh, then we lost her again.
Would you like me to call her back, Eric?
Um, I mean, yes, eventually. I don't know if you want to, maybe just give her a minute to.
Move on to the second name, maybe, and.
Move on to the second name. We'll go back to Lydia.
Okay, and here comes Melissa.
Move on to the second name, maybe, and move on to the second name. We'll go back to Lydia.
Melissa, could you mute your computer, please?
Yep, I did.
Okay, great, thanks. This is Eric Vanon Hubel. Thank you for taking the time to call. You could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure, Eric. My name is Melissa Stitts. My address is 3487 Bay Highlands Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I also appreciate you taking my call. I'll pay attention at the time. And I just want to, first of all, start with the fact that I want to say a thank you to Rhonda, Andrew, and of course Christina, who I connected with today, and just say thank you for your support of the Rally for Reform that we held this last weekend. It was great to see Andrew and Rhonda attend. They pretty much stayed across the street and just listened from afar, but I think they would agree that there were some pretty emotional and conviction in the conversations. Christina was kind enough to email me today, and we played phone tag, but we had the opportunity to speak. So I valued our conversation today, Christina, too, as well. I just want to start with, you know, communication makes and breaks a lot of great things. And I think that's one of the challenges that we have in front of us throughout this entire year, and where some of the opportunities and quite frankly, a lot of the gaps are with the current board and with Superintendent, with Stephen Merly. And I think we have an opportunity to improve upon that, and I'm confident we can do that, because that is uncontrollable. And you may be wondering, who is this gal and why, and what's going on? And I just want to start with, we have three children that went through the public school system of Green Bay. Our youngest is now a senior at Preble, and we've been involved with boosters, supporting school events. Our daughter went off to Madison, our son attends, our middle son attends GB. All doing very well. The public education has served our family very well, but I am very disappointed in the board and in Merly's decision, Superintendent Merly, this last year. And I think, you know, the situation was presented upon us with no choice by anybody. With that being said, I think there's some things that could have been done proactively to change that. But I don't want to look back, I want to look forward. And looking forward, the things that we have to take into consideration is that our failing rate has doubled over the last year. And there are many kids and many families that just don't know what to do. They are not comfortable speaking publicly. They do not have the means to make their voices heard, and they are truly on the verge of hopelessness. They don't know what to do. We have kids that were A students now failing to, in their mind, failing to a C student. We have C students and D students that are just, quite frankly, stopped showing for class. We have mandatory reporting that has dropped by the wayside, putting our most vulnerable children at a risk that no educator ever wants to come across. And I can't imagine any of us are okay with this. And this is all a product of virtual. This is all a product of virtual education. You know, I had asked, there were quite a few parents, to be honest, that had sent in emails and were hoping to read them or have somebody read them tonight, because they weren't comfortable speaking. And I know I'm, I think I've got two minutes left. But I just wanted to be a voice for a couple of parents that are working and not able to call in. Jennifer Wabber had sent me an email, and she said, "Melissa, if you could read this, I'd appreciate it. My kids are social butterflies. They need to have other human interactions besides parents and siblings. My son is in first grade, and he does not have the ability to sit and pay attention to a computer for six hours per day. If I'm working, which is 90% of the time, he is lacking in studying. My daughter is a fourth grade and is doing well, but is so frustrated that she can't see her friends. She loves school. It's heartbreaking to see the mental anguish that my kids are going through." Her kids actually attend Wilder Elementary. Kids are resilient, and parents are treating them like kids. Get, let them get their hands dirty and build immunity. For those that do not want to return to school, let them have virtual options, but please allow us that want in-person that opportunity. If attendance is down, then classes can be combined for those fearing lack of teachers. Is that a solution that we can look at? Then I have one other parent that reached out to me. I guess I'm up for time, so I hear ding dong.
Oh, I see, you have thirty seconds.
Okay, very good. One other parent was Kaylee Wiris, who has four children, a first, a third grader, a second grader, and a child that had start. And she basically says that she cannot, she cannot take her children being at home, not for the fact that she doesn't want to spend time with them, but she's not an educator. She's not good enough to teach her kids. And that's basically the gist of hers, is that she's just flabbergasted, she's exhausted, she's tired, she's, she's not cutting it. So, asking for help once again. I appreciate the opportunity to dial in, and thank you for listening.
Thank you for calling, Melissa. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Here we have Lydia back.
Hi, Lydia, can you hear us?
Hi, I'm back. Were you guys hanging up on purpose?
No, I'm not sure what happened. I'm gonna let you know, so, so we can get you in. Introduce yourself.
Steve, I was thinking you were hanging up with me on purpose, because you and I have not always seen eye to eye, right?
I can promise you that that's not happening. Lydia, if you could, if you could introduce yourself and give your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure, I'll give it another go. First of all, the woman that spoke before me, or just before, I agree wholeheartedly 100% of everything she said. And so overwhelmingly, all the parents that you guys are serving, you guys know that. But my name is Lydia Laurie Danik, and my address is 901 South Roosevelt, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301. And to just kind of jump in, is I wrote numerous letters kind of asking what the criteria is. And in March, we all were hands in the air. We didn't know what to do, right? But now it's December, almost January, and the moment has come, the moment has passed to open schools, and I find the school board still unprepared. And that makes me so sad, because I'm new to the district, and I'm so excited, and my kids were so excited. One son started how, and it's just such a diverse, beautiful, beautiful school. And he went there in person for a couple of months, and then it closed down. My other son started just this fall, Leonardo da Vinci, and he is so excited, and he hasn't set foot in the classroom one day. And the thing that is so frustrating to me, Steve, I'm talking to you, is your word "safe" and your, your overuse of the word "safe." We want to make sure that you return to school with someone that's safe. We're looking out for your safety, safe, safe, safe. I wish that that could be banned. That word is subjective, right? Like, what if we said peanuts are unsafe, period? That's just an example. I'm allergic to peanuts, so they are unsafe for me. You guys may not be, so they're fine. So the word "safe" is objective. I really take umbrage when you're hiding behind the word "safe" and throwing your hands in the air and just saying, "Well, I'll open when it's safe." That's your personal bias, right? I mean, if I take more precautions than you, I could be considered overreacting. If I take less precautions than you, I'm irresponsible. All of that is subjective, and that has no place in a public school, public school board. I expect better from all of you. Really, I do. So I'm getting a breath here. Do I have a couple more minutes?
Uh, yep, two minutes.
Perfect. So I actually, again, no shocker to any of you, tried to go above your head, and I called the mayor, and he said that in Wisconsin, that the mayor is not above you, that the mayor cannot order you guys to step up. You know, that he can't, but the assembly can. So some really great news. I urge everyone listening to this phone call to go to WEAC.org and look at the Assembly has put forth a, it's called a pandemic plan. It was new on December 1st. If you Google it, you might get the old crusty one from April. Skip that and go on to the December 1st one. It provides things that I'm so wholeheartedly in agreement with, that you, you're bored. You guys will be fined if you don't open schools. And I'm so supportive of that. I want everyone to call their congressperson, their senator. Christina, you're, as of January 15th, you are near Assembly person. I don't know how you're gonna juggle both of those, but like Christina as my Assembly person, I vote yes for the Assembly proposition to step up. The moment has come. You guys are not prepared. Super disappointed. Please open the school. So there you go.
Lydia, thank you so much for taking the time to call in.
Hey, Eric, just a quick, just a quick note, and Lydia, to your point about the legislation, if you wait for the legislative update, there's actually a link in our meeting tonight, and I'm gonna be talking about that, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. All right, guys. I'm really kinda nice to do the right thing, just not on your personal bias, but for all the students. You know, they send prisoners to isolation, for Pete's sake, not little people. All right, thanks for listening. Bye.
Thanks, Lydia. Bye-bye. Justin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you for taking the time to call in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Justin Delpho, 260 Fairway Drive, Luxembourg, 54217. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the board. I've been a special education teacher at Green Bay West High School since 2002, and I currently serve as the president of the Green Bay Education Association, representing approximately 1,400 teachers and paraprofessionals. On behalf of our teachers and paraprofessionals, I would like to correct a misperception that I have seen often on social media, that educators want school buildings closed. As I have said consistently since I spoke to you in July, everyone wants things to be back to normal. No one went into education to teach students this way. I'm lucky to see the incredible time and energy that staff have put in to make the best out of this difficult situation. We all want our buildings open when it is the right time for the safety of students, staff, and the community. Everyone is understandably frustrated with how this pandemic is affecting their lives. This is why, rather than being divided, we need to work together as a community to make shared sacrifices to get through what many experts expect to be a dark winter. We are hitting the holidays in the flu season, and vaccinations are hopefully around the corner. Now is not the time to consider large-scale reopenings of school buildings. When the Board of Education voted in August to start the school year virtually, the burden rate in Brown County was less than 200. Until recently, we had consistently been over 1,000 for weeks. We have made it this far. Wavering now after all these months wouldn't make any sense and could negatively impact the modest progress we had made in bringing the burden rate down some over the last couple of weeks. Everyone understands that some students are falling behind a bit academically. But knowing how much our educators care about students, I am confident that we will be able to close learning gaps. There are more important things than test scores. Our educators have made themselves available outside of the school day to students and families, answering questions, supporting those who may be struggling, dropping off meals or school materials to students' homes. We are working hard to support students and minimize lost learning. Our students are learning many lifelong skills in the virtual model. I saw a quote the other day that stated, quote, "We have third graders logging into Zoom meetings, troubleshooting technology glitches, learning to communicate their needs, and adapting to a completely foreign school environment. With these skills, I think they just might be pulling way ahead," unquote. Everyone understands the social-emotional toll this pandemic has taken on our students, staff, and community. Simply reopening our buildings will not fix the problem and could, in fact, make it worse. Going to school wearing a mask all day, fear of seeing student, staff, or family members fall ill, and constantly opening and re-closing would create even more stress and anxiety for our families. We know that within the 20,000 students in our district, not all students have access to the same medical care. We know that some of our students live with their grandparents or are multi-generational homes with individuals at great risk. Our educators know the devastation that the loss of a classmate, sibling, parent, or any family member has on our students. We experience it with students every year. I know many people have been using the words of medical experts like Dr. Fauci out of context to reopen school buildings. Here are comments from his recent ABC interview. Quote, "The best way to ensure the safety of the children in school is to get the community level spread low. So if you mitigate the things that you know are causing spread in a very, very profound way, in a robust way, if you bring that down, you will then indirectly and ultimately protect the children in the school, because the community level determines how things go across the board," end quote. "Our community level of spread, as shown by our burden rate and positivity rate, is not low. Places such as Germany that have somewhat successfully opened school buildings had the community spread under control before reopening by wearing masks, closing bars, and having a robust contact tracing plan." I close with some guiding questions that illustrate why.
Yep, I apologize. We're at the five-minute limit, and I need to enforce it pretty tightly.
Okay, can I just finish my last sentence here?
Finish your, finish your sentence, yep.
Okay. I urge the board to approve the gating criteria that will be presented this evening and to make it permanent. The constant revisiting of the gating criteria just leads to unneeded division and anxiety for families, students, and staff.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Kelly, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for taking the time to call in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
All right, thank you. My name is Kelly Delvo. My address is 716 Chapelview Road in Green Bay. I wanted to call in and share my support in the fact that Green Bay and the board are being very cautious and thinking of the kids' health first and safety of all staff and workers rather than giving in to a few who would like the kids back in school. I think we all would like our kids back in school, but we need to look at the bigger picture. It is difficult doing virtual school. I have a son who is in special ed, and it's been a struggle. We're not able to have all the accommodations. And at the same time, I'd rather have him safe and healthy instead of exposing him or possibly others to something that is potentially deadly. I think you guys are being very wise in listening to the health experts and looking at the criteria for it to be safe. I feel like other districts that have kind of done the back-and-forth thing jumped the gun a little bit, and we are a much bigger district, and it's very difficult to compare us to even the DePere or Howard Swamaco just with the number of students and staff that we have. We are a much larger district. I think teachers and staff are doing the best that they can, and I commend everybody on their efforts thus far. And I hope that everybody continues on that same path. As far as the, you know, the, the issues with mental health with the students. I don't think it's necessarily that it's a virtual school and that's what's causing all the mental health issues. I think if you look at us as a nation, things that are going on between the pandemic, the election, the racial tensions. Everybody is suffering with some mental health issues right now as far as depression and anxiety. This is all new and maybe something the district can look at is having a group time or chats with social workers. Where they're doing some group therapy with the kids to help them at times, you know, in the school day or during breaks around that Wednesday. And maybe looking at some other alternatives as well as far as the scheduling of the day. It is difficult to sit in front of a monitor that long. And so are there things that we can learn from some of the virtual academies about how to organize things? But I just wanted to share my support with looking at the larger picture and long term. As far as stability, once we do go back, that we're able to stay back in session. And it's not quarantine back and forth. It's not at the risk of the kids or any of the staff. Their health and wellbeing. So that's just my piece that you do have parents out here in the district that do support what you are doing. As far as following the cautions that have been set forth by various health districts and officials.
Thank you very much for calling, Kelly. We appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to skip one here. So we're moving on to number six. We'll come back to number five and try again.
Hi Jamie, can you hear me? Jamie, are you there?
I am here.
Thank you so much for calling. Um if you could start by uh introducing yourself and giving us your address. Uh then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Sure. My name is Jamie Jakes and my address is twelve eleven Richard Dean Court, Green Bay. Um I basically, mine is going to be short and sweet, but I have four kids that are part of the Green Bay area school system. Um Preble Southwest and Kennedy Elementary. And I'm going to focus more on my daughter this evening. She, since the fourth grade, has been part of a five oh four plan. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. But she's struggled a lot with her ADHD and we've made some huge strides within the last, uh you know, five years. Within that five oh four plan, um so much so that we um decided to end the five oh four last year. Because she was maintaining an AB average all throughout middle school. Little did I know, a pandemic was going to come through. And if you have a child that has ADHD and they've had to sit through, you know, Zoom classes every single day. That's, it's, it's so incredibly hard to watch her struggle to keep that engagement day in and day out. I'm a parent who's fortunate enough, fortunate enough to stay home um from work and work at home. So I make sure my kids log in every single day to all of their classes. And, and I can do that. I'm lucky to do that, but I can't help them to stay engaged. That, that's the hardest part to me. And my thought is that if you give the opportunity for some of us to be able to go back to school, we're not saying open up school and make everybody go back to school. But at least leave that option out there. Uh your classroom sizes would be smaller if, if, you know, what's true. Is that there's so many people that want their kids to stay home. Well, then stay home. You don't have to send your kids to school. But let the people like us that need our children back in school the opportunity to do so. And that's basically all I wanted to say today. Thank you.
Jamie, thank you so much for, for calling in and sharing that story with us.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Edwin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address. And then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Yes, my name is Edwin Fredericks. My address is twenty one thirty six Blue Bell Street. I'm speaking to the school board tonight to give you a perspective of what in-person teaching would look like. If you bring students back prior to our community, getting the spread of COVID nineteen under control. Or the successful administration of a vaccine. I work in an enabling school district that has chosen to have students learn in person since the beginning of the school year. While many in Brown County view districts like this as being successful, I will paint a picture of what it's actually like in a classroom. Classroom teachers are not able to teach with any sort of consistency. Teachers are continually facing the challenge of different groups of kids every day. One day you may have a full class and the next be missing multiple students because of them testing positive or being quarantined. Teachers then face a challenge of having to teach students in person or attempting to provide some sort of instruction to those who may be gone for one or more weeks. Schools that are doing in-person learning are continually opening and then closing. Students may spend a month or two with in-person learning and have to switch to virtual. After a few weeks of this, students may be back in person for, with another school closure looming. This creates zero consistency. Students are struggling with this constant struggle of their schedule, mode of learning and levels of support. This is not how students learn. Even when students are in person, classrooms are not close to normal. Students are not moving around classrooms working cooperatively. Teachers need to keep students stationary and attempt to keep them six feet apart in order to reduce the spread of COVID in schools. This is extremely difficult, if not impossible, in most classrooms. Staff are not working closely with students in an effort to prevent them from getting or spreading COVID. Students at all levels need continued reminders to keep their masks over their mouths and their noses. When COVID enters students' homes, it quickly impacts all. Not only does a student who tested positive have to miss school. But all their siblings who live with them have to miss a significant amount of time because they are either quarantining or eventually test positive themselves. Now school staff have to find a way to educate all that cannot attend school, which in some cases may be for weeks at a time. With all this turmoil, teachers cannot adequately teach all their students. They have to plan to teach those who are in person, those who are out on i- isolation or quarantine. And prepare for the unknown of who will, who will or who will not be in classroom the following day. In addition, schools do not have enough substitutes to cover staff who are out themselves, either due to a positive test they have received. Test results they are waiting for, in quarantine themselves or caring for a sick family member. The lack of substitutes forces schools to rely on the staff who are there to sub in other classrooms. Giving up their valuable time needed to prepare for the constant change in their own classrooms. Then there are all the valuable resources that are taken away to teach those students whose families have chosen to have their children learn through the district's optional virtual learning. I have one son who lives in middle school and one who lives in high school. They have spent their entire formal educational years in the Green Bay School District. My wife and I have been very pleased with their educational, with their education because of the hard work of their teachers. With the last ten months not being ideal, my children have continued to learn because of the hard work their teachers continue to do to make virtual learning effective. They have consistency. This is what all students need in order to learn. What is going to happen if the school board chooses to ignore their own gating criteria they adopted months ago in an attempt to keep all safe? There will be no consistency. There will be no safety. There will not be enough staff to cover classrooms. There will be teachers who are overwhelmed. There will be more sick individuals in Brown County. There will be more hospital beds filled. Well, then we know what happens next. Educational decisions are supposed to be based off data, not off feelings of individual desires and pressures. I'd like to thank the school board for letting, giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you very much, Edwin. I appreciate you calling in.
Okay, you have a good night.
You as well.
All right.
And Eric, I'm going back up to number five. I got ahold of her, so.
Hi Amy, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you so much for calling in. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself um and giving us your address. And then you would have five minutes to address the board.
Sure. Um I'm Amy Vanen Langenberg and um I live at twenty four seventy seven Valley Haven Court in Green Bay. My son Walter Vanen Langenberg, we call him Wally. He is in kindergarten at McCullough. And I just want to start out with that it's been a very challenging year. We have probably a hundred plus seesaw assignments that are not completed. I also have a two-year-old, well, almost two-year-old at home. And it's been really difficult trying to sit there on the computer with my son during the day trying to get him to do his schoolwork. Initially, I was told that there's only a few things that need to be done. It would maybe take like a half hour to an hour. And then I could do it even after work. Well, that's not really the case. There's about three to four Zoom meets a day. Um there's four video lessons. As well as all these seesaw assignments and we are so far behind and I don't know how to catch up. And financially, I don't know how much longer I can keep my business open. While still trying to be teacher um to Wally for school. And I really want him to do well. I myself am someone that needs to get As in school and so I want my son to do well in school. Um but I recently opened my own business and because of virtual learning. I'm only able to work enough hours to pay my rent. And I don't know how much longer I can do that and still actually have a profitable business. Because now my insurance for the year is due. Um as well as all of my licensing that I need to have to keep my business open. And I, this was the first year I wasn't able to buy my own children any Christmas presents. So um it was really emotional for me. To not be able to do things because I'm at home. Trying to educate Wally and make sure he's up to date in school. Um and I felt I needed to choose between an education for him or work. And I think that's really unfortunate to have to choose. And my son desperately needs other children. Even I've suggested maybe an additional Zoom meet just to have kids talk to each other or play a game. Because he gets so frustrated with lack of interaction that um he's become mean even. And he, he's never been a sassy child whatsoever. He never talked back before. Um until this year. We have had more fights about, well, why can't I just go to school and see my friends? Why, you know, it, it's really hard on a parent to see your kid really struggle with that. Um we have dealt with in my family, a lot of mental health issues. With depression, it runs in my family and I just see my son and he's six years old. I'm going down that same path. Um so I really, that's all I really wanted to say is that, you know. I think being in person should be an option. Um especially for those of us that don't have the financial means to have, pay someone else to, to do the virtual schooling for them. Or, or need that just for mental stability. Of course, I think there should be an option for people that really don't want their kid going to school because of the virus. But I think there should be an option for those of us that still do want that. That's all I have to say.
Amy, thank you for calling in and sharing your story with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye now.
Bye. Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much for taking the time to call in. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address. And then you'll have five minutes to speak to the board.
Great, thank you. My name is Sarah Troop. I live at four twenty one St. Mary's Boulevard, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And I've been on most of these calls and I also attended the rally this weekend. And I often hear a lot of empathy of what parents and students are going to, going through right now. But I really feel like the complete lack of progress to try anything new, other than new online software tools. Really shows me that you're not actually hearing the suffering that is among nearly almost all of our twenty thousand students. You know, it's really fun, one thing to hear it from the parents, uh like Jamie tonight and Amy. But boy, to hear it this weekend from the actual students was a whole new level that just blew me away. There were things like failure, lack of motivation, depression, complete apathy for school that some students who were always good students. To students with disabilities who were told that their virtual experience would be fabulous. Basically needing to drop out. The actual suffering is so real, it's so devastating and it's heartbreaking. I wanted to revisit Eric's three reasons at the August third meeting for going one hundred percent virtual. First was that the proposed environment to follow social distancing would not be what our students were used to or conducive to learning. There would be no carpet for group reading and so on. I wonder if you think that my son's bedroom is conducive to learning? Do you think my kitchen table is conducive to learning? Or worse, do you think four kids in a one-bedroom apartment is conducive to learning? And the actual, very, very worst part is kids in front of screens for ten to twelve hours per day. It's certainly not conducive. We would give up carpet time and anything else. And we would follow the guidelines in order for some in-person learning. The second was volatile, the volatility of staffing. And I understand that. I actually don't have answers. But I think not even trying anything is not the answer. This is where we lean on innovation and strategy and reasonable policies on quarantining, which keep coming down every day. If our healthcare workers can work with the right protection since March, so can our education staff into this new year. Despite the supplies that are out there now are so abundant. The third reason was painting a scary picture about the death rate in children. He said he didn't know what it was, but imagine, the actual word was imagine, it is one out of ten thousand or two Green Bay students. This is a completely imaginary statistic that couldn't be further from the truth to scare others. There are over one point four million kids in Wisconsin with a single unfortunate death, highly likely not caused by in-person learning. The imaginary statistic is not in the same ballpark. We need to stop using imaginary statistics about death rates in the Green Bay School District. The board has expressed that you feel ownership on stopping the spread of diseases in our community. A disease that has a ninety nine point nine nine survival rate in children. And we're going to do this by offering only virtual learning. But here's what you also own, do. But here's what you also own due to only offering virtual learning. You own that depression that is seen in almost all of our households. You own the mental health hospitalizations, the medications, the school failures that are skyrocketing, and school dropouts. You own the lack of learning, lack of skill training, lack of socialization, lack of school memories, and I can assure you, all of this is abundantly more than just two kids in the Green Bay School District. You cannot control the virus that is affecting this entire world, but you can control all these other things that virtual learning is doing to our kids. Ununderstandably, a previous caller said everyone is suffering, and they could be suffering from the national things that are going on, but isolation is not the answer. If they are all suffering right now, isolating them and throwing them in front of computers is only going to make it worse. Steven and Christina, you said it's equal on both sides of the issue, and after listening to the meetings, the callers don't reflect this. What I'm asking is ask us. Do one of your surveys, not with any leading questions or confusing questions. Ask us. Better yet, ask the students, and you're going to see a new phenomenon, kids begging to go back to school. What I'm asking is stop kicking the issue down the road, give us choice, and let's coexist with COVID. It is definitely possible. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much for taking the time to call in. We really appreciate it. And there'll be information in the meeting later on about the next survey.
Thank you.
Yep. Shelley, are you there?
Yeah.
Do you mute your computer in the background, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Perfect. If you could start introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Great, thanks, Eric. Hi, my name is Shelley Scher. I live at thirty-three eighty-one Bushwood Lane in Green Bay. My husband Kevin and I have three children. Our daughter Sadie is in seventh grade, and we have twin boys Camden and Graydon in fifth grade. And all of them are struggling in this virtual, in this virtual format. They're struggling academically, emotionally, and socially. I'm going to speak mostly about our daughter. She has a neurological disability, and the virtual model is significantly difficult for her. In a normal setting, she loves school. She thrives in her routine and feels confident when she is there. She is known and loved by teachers, administrator, and staff. She is funny, kind, and loving. One facet of her disability is the limitation to stay focused and on task. Once her brain has been distracted, it can take several minutes to get back on track. At school, she has a paraprofessional with her in regular ed classes to keep her on track or get her back on to help with note-taking, modifications of assignments, and help her stay engaged in lessons. None of these accommodations can be provided virtually. Another facet is that she absolutely needs an emotional connection with the adults she interacts with. When she does not have that connection, she cannot perform. She is unable to demonstrate any sort of learning or growth. Her ability to make that connection with new teachers in a virtual setting was and is impossible. Virtual learning strips away the two most essential things that allow her to be confident, successful, and have progress. For her, they are as essential as air. My daughter met her breaking point on October fifth. She locked herself in the bathroom, and while self-harming, screaming, and crying, I don't know what they are saying. I don't understand my teacher. I can't do this. I'm so stupid. This is what virtual learning is doing for her. Crushing her confidence and making an already large learning gap even wider. That day, we made the extremely difficult decision to pull her from all of her regular ed classes. To be put in a position where we had to make a choice to stop our child's education is absolutely deplorable. Can any of you honestly say this model is best, is what is best for my child? It is time to stop making unilateral decisions that will continue to harm our kids. Saying that grades seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve don't need to be in person is asinine. Admittedly, you don't know every student, so how can you make wide-sweeping decisions to continue to keep students in these grade levels virtual? To the school board members, you are all elective representatives of our school community, yet parents have been faced with little representation from you. This really hit home with me on Saturday at the Rally for Reform, where only Rhonda and Andrew thought that it was important enough to come and listen to what students and parents had to say. Public health is not within the board or district's purview. You will never be able to mitigate scenarios for twenty thousand students or the three thousand teachers and staff. Let us have the choice. Let us choose how to mitigate our risks. I see the mental health of my children declining monthly. Our kids cannot be expected to continue on this path. This is not equity for any of them. I hope that you will all consider not just burden rates, but you will also look at percentage by population rates. It's the same thing as looking at speed and velocity. The percentage rate of infection in Brown County has never been higher than one point five percent of the population. We can't just look and cherry pick one statistic to look at for this disease. I would also say that never has the school district been able to guarantee safety at any point in time. We have been all left to mitigate our own risks, and we should all be left to do that now. We can make choices for our families that are responsible. Thank you.
Shelley, thank you for taking the time to call in and share that with us.
Thanks, Eric.
Stacy, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, if you could, thank you very much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay, Stacy Reed, ten sixteen Neville Ave. All right, good evening, board and fellow parents. Thank you for hearing my struggles with virtual learning. I'm confused and quite honestly hurt by the publication on November tenth stating virtual school is going well, is clearly not going well for a great many of families, and one of those is us. This platform simply does not work for elementary kids. My kids are struggling with virtual learning. Academically, they're on track, but not by having the emotional connections they need to make with their peers and staff is hurting them to a point that I fear will become a mental issue even after we're able to come back to school into society. My kinder still fights me in the morning about this not being real school. My third grader misses her friends. There are no opportunities to chat amongst themselves. I am a super organized mom with schoolwork, tools to assist in going through all the platform work on CSO for both. However, our quote "free day" Wednesday is still a full day of work for me. My kids crave the structure of a physical building. We're doing it because we have to. Mom is struggling. I'm putting in close to seventy-hour work weeks with all the work time they're given, and now it's on my shoulders to ensure that everything is completed on time. I am still working forty hours virtually. That includes every weekend, Saturday and Sunday, six AM to four PM, and Monday and Tuesday nights, which you've reached me on my work phone. This is tough. I'm going straight from six-thirty in the morning until midnight or later to try to get everything to complete, checked off, to maintain my house and take care of everyone. Does any of this weigh in anywhere? Starting to think I should have transferred to homeschool with the majority of my friends. My gut knows if we didn't stay, funding is diminished for next year. I am normally a voice for the school system, starting to question why. My advice to you is allow us even one day a week, alternating hours, alternating schedules, let everyone from preschool to high school to come back to school. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in tonight, Stacy. We appreciate it.
Yep, bye.
Working on the next one. Just a reminder, if you're still waiting for a call, the number will come in from an out-of-state number because of our Zoom platform.
Okay, moving on to number twelve, I got a voicemail. Yeah, number eleven. We'll come back to her.
Betsy, can you hear me? Are you there, Betsy?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and then giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay, my name is Betsy. I live at twenty-nine eighteen Apple Ridge in Green Bay. So, thank you for taking my call. I just, my perspective is coming from having a junior in high school. He he is my third child. I had two go through before. One of them is actually now in grad school, another one in college, and then now my youngest is a junior. So I, I know what he's missing, and I know the struggle. He's a three-sport athlete, has a job, and maintains a three-point-nine GPA up until this year. So my question regarding the plan to exclude three-quarters of the high schools and two-thirds of the middle schools. I want to know what happened to the No Child Left Behind Act that supposes the definition is to close the achievement gap with accountability, flexibility, and choice, choice being the key word. The plan to exclude specific age groups is, to me, is blatant discrimination based on age and certainly doesn't align with the No Child Left Behind Act. As a board, I'd like you to be fair and impartial and offer choice to all students regardless of age. You are the only voice that they're allowed to have, so please be their voice. We cannot succeed when over seventy percent are left behind. I'm asking, your purpose is to ensure proper education for the benefit of the students without discrimination. Managing the viruses for healthcare workers, we need to be realistic in the gating criteria. Viruses don't just disappear. The current numbers where you want less than twenty before schools are allowed to be like they knew it one long year ago is completely unattainable. Even ten years from now, you're not going to see numbers that low. So we need to stop the insanity. Otherwise, at this point, you might as well just sell the buildings since you never planned to use them as they were intended. Also, your word prioritize has reached the students, and they are not happy, to say the least. They feel defeated, unimportant, and they're just downright mad. No other schools are being discriminatory when they're bringing their kids back. Green Bay is better than that, aren't we? My question with that model is what's the plan for the eighth graders that take ninth grade classes? What's the plan for the tenth and the eleventh graders that are in that biology class with some of those freshmen? Secondary school is not set up like elementary. Many courses have more than one grade level represented. But why can't the entire class be offered the same opportunity to learn the coursework? Please do not force this divide and create resentment among those kids. Their mental state's already extremely fragile. Please give all students a choice. And that's the main thing we're looking for. We want choice. We're not saying it's all or nothing. We know it can't be back to normal, quote-unquote "normal." We also know the schools have thousands of dollars spent on PPE, which is what, currently sitting in boxes, collecting dust, is my guess? As far as the comment from the union rep, who I don't believe has kids in this district, being as he lives in Luxembourg, please understand that there are many, many teachers that have come forward to parents saying they want to be in schools. They really do. They are struggling as hard as some of these kids are. It's difficult. At the rally on Saturday, I even had one of the police officers come up to me and say, please get these kids back in school. It affects their jobs. There's just so many things going on. Like I said, it's not all or nothing. We just, we want a choice. If it's working for some kids virtually, and they have issues at home, health-related, with either themselves or their families, that's fine. They have that choice, and that's the thing. We need a choice.
That's enough.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the end of your time. If you had one more sentence, I'd let you finish your thought.
The only thing I wanted to end with is please don't let engagement turn into abandonment, equity into discrimination, or excellence into failure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling, Betsy. We appreciate it. Brooke, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, did you mute your computer?
I did.
Okay, good. Thanks. If you could start by introducing yourself, giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
You bet. My name is Brooke Andrews, and I live at thirty-one fifty Outing Court in Green Bay. Thank you for taking my call this evening. Over the weekend, we received our property tax bill. Almost half of what we are paying is to support our school system. Imagine my surprise when I saw an increase in that number despite our forty-six schools being all but empty for the past four months. Costs to operate schools should be at an all-time low, and if the additional cost is associated with increased costs tied to technology, we can eliminate a large portion of that by putting those students that prefer to be in person back in the classroom. Open our schools. Thirty-five percent of students in our district have yet to log into a class. For those of you keeping score, that's more than seven thousand students that we have likely lost for good, and the longer this goes on, the more students we are likely to continue to lose. Even those that started the year engaged, optimistic, and motivated are now restless, underperforming, and over it. Open our schools. The most important responsibility of a school board is to work with their communities to improve student achievement in their local public schools. You are not responsible for community safety regarding the spread of a virus. You are responsible for the caliber of the education you provide, and you are accountable to us as taxpayers for the quality of that education. Right now, more than half of our middle and high school students are failing. Virtual learning is failing them, and by extension, you as a board and Stephen Merly, a superintendent, are failing them. Open our schools. If you vote to approve the proposals to change the grading criteria and lessen the graduation requirements for our students, you are doing them and all of us a huge disservice. This clearly indicates that you know that you are failing our students. You are fully aware that the solution to these problems is opening our schools rather than putting a Band-Aid on it and trying to cover up the black eye that Green Bay Area Public Schools has given itself. Open our schools. Today, I tracked the amount of time my kids were in class. My high schooler begins his day at seven-thirty and ends his day at three PM. He was on his computer for instruction for a total of ninety-three minutes. My middle schooler starts at seven-thirty and ends her day at about two-forty PM, and she was on her computer for instruction. My middle schooler starts at 7:30 and ends her day at about 2:40 PM, and she was on her computer for instruction for about 157 minutes today. Imagine my frustration when I see these numbers. As a parent who's expecting excellence for my kids, imagine their frustration as they sit for a half an hour or more in between classes all day long, waiting for their next class to start. This does not represent excellence, and it certainly isn't the best use of time for my children. And we wonder why half the student population is failing? Our kids went from being fully engaged in a classroom setting for 50-plus minutes per class per day, five days per week, to getting roughly two hours total of instruction four days per week? Hmm. Does anyone else see something wrong with this? Open our schools. Your lack of representation at the rally on Saturday was very eye-opening. It's long been suspected that watching the board meetings based on certain individuals' body language and comments that they appear to have already made up their minds, that their minds have already been made up, that going back to an in-person education was not something they would ever entertain, that they refuse to show up and be there to see those brave students so real and so raw and so vulnerable and full of pain is tangible proof that you really don't care what anybody impacted directly by your choices feels unless they happen to align with you. Open our schools. The all-or-nothing mindset that you have is appalling to me and further indicates that you have not been listening to us. Not once has anyone asked this to be an all or nothing. Not once have we said that we want all schools open and that the virtual option should be taken away. Every step of the way, we have asked for the option for you as the board to make a decision on behalf of all of the people that you serve. Listening and hearing are two different things. Let us assess the risks for our family and choose the option that best fits our needs. It's your job to provide the opportunity and the choice. Open our schools. Your blatant refusal to receive input and to change course when needed indicates to me that you are incapable of doing your job effectively. You all make decisions on a daily basis. We all do, and we all make the wrong decisions from time to time. Typically, those decisions only affect a small group of people, maybe only your immediate family. But when making decisions that impact an entire community, an entire population of people, you have to be able to recognize when there is a need to switch course. You can't take a stand and refuse to recognize, and I'm sorry, you can't take a stand and refuse to budge. When the winds change, you have to move with them. You have to be a big enough person to recognize that while you may have been strong in your convictions once, the situation has changed and you also have to make a change. That time is now. Open our schools. And I'd like to add.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and finish.
I'm sorry. I'd like to add that I take great offense to the president of our Green Bay Education Association calling into this meeting and requesting the gating criteria be made permanent. I believe this only speaks volumes to what we are up against.
Thank you.
That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Appreciate you calling. Stacy, are you there? Stacy, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for calling. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have five minutes to address the board.
Sounds good. Thank you. My name is Stacy Orlikowski. My address is 543 Delwood Road in Green Bay. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my six-year-old son. I do have two children, but I just have one in school. My son's name Ian. He is a first grader but attends Aldo Leopold School. Ian has attended Aldo since starting 4K, and he was diagnosed right around that time of the starting school with ADHD, Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder combined type, meaning he struggles with both impulsivity and hyperactivity. He also has an IEP for speech therapy at school. Ian is a very bright boy, and I've seen him excel so much, especially when he started full-day school at Aldo in kindergarten. My son strives for routine and structure. There's been a dramatic change since school has been virtual starting in March of 2020. Ian has been struggling to stay motivated, to pay attention, and to fully focus on his teacher and schooling through a computer screen. I feel, I know Jamie still before too, and I feel your pain with having a child with ADHD and other people that have children with special needs to strive and keep these children on task. My son used to come home excited from school and tell me about his day and what he had learned. Now he comes easily frustrated and is at a fight to get him to sit down and log into computer meetings. He keeps telling me, Mom, I just want to go back to school and I just want to see my friends. Because of how he is struggling, I have reached out to a child psychologist that he has seen before, and this is the person who had diagnosed him with the ADHD. I was told the first available appointment was August of 2021. Let that sink in. What does that tell you of how many children are struggling? It is not just the coronavirus. It is not just that we have a pandemic. These kids are not seeing their friends. They're not in person and seeing their teachers, and I can see a huge decline in my child. Obviously, there are many kids struggling with their mental health because of these huge and drastic changes. I've heard many moms on public moms groups and school groups state how their children are struggling with depression, anxiety, and more since schools have been fully virtual. I ask, why is it that private schools in Green Bay, public schools such as West DePere, Luxembourg, Denmark, and Southern Door can all figure out how to get these children back safely in school, but Green Bay Public Schools cannot figure out a way? I have people that are in my work that have these children, and I understand that there are some that do have to go back and forth in their times. But honestly, it's been a huge burden that has been taken off when their children can go, and they still, while sometimes have minor problems where children are having to come back, it's nothing in comparison of all those parents that have been from the get of this pan, excuse me, pandemic. It's nothing compared to the constant virtual schooling that we have had to deal with. The one has had her children come back twice. I've had another one that says she hasn't had to deal with it yet. So I am fully fine with having to deal with the potential that children may have to stay home if they would develop symptoms. But the experts are saying, and the information is there, that these children are not the cause of these numbers that are in Brown County. They're not the cause of the numbers that are seen around the world, that children are not adding to this. It is extremely low, the spread of COVID-19 for children. Why is it that we are not listening to the experts? I understand that some people do not feel safe sending their children back. By all means, allow a virtual or in-home option for those students that are choosing to stay home or parents that are choosing to keep their children home. But for those students that are struggling and desperately wanting to go back and doing what it takes, so in other words, masking or extra precautions, I ask that the school board listen and open the schools with no grading criteria. I also wanted to add that I heard Melissa speak and talk of hopelessness. We have struggled horribly. We bought our house in Green Bay School District in 2019, October 2019. We've already tried to look to see if this doesn't work and if you guys will not open school this year to move somewhere else that will allow our child to go to school. We love our home. We love our neighborhood, but our child comes first, and we want him to be able to go to school and excel. I am a registered nurse by trade, and I hold a bachelor's degree. I do not hold a degree in education. I do not know what to do when my son is struggling terribly in math and writing. I don't have the educational background to help him like a person with a degree in education can. And I will say that my husband and I are fortunate enough to have daycare help us out on some of the days because they started offering a virtual program. But one, it comes at a huge unplanned expense at our cost. And two, even though my child has been attending with other Green Bay Public students, I would love to know why is it that the daycares, which ours is not the only one, can get this figured out? They've had zero positive COVID children at the daycare. They mask, they follow precautions, they space out the ducks, they made it work. So if my child can see his other students there and do his homework there and get some, some help there, why is it we can't open the schools at least for half the time or do a hybrid model? Thank you for listening.
Stacy, thank you so much for calling in and sharing your story.
Thank you.
Time to do that. Five-minute time.
Dr. Hoppy, you there?
Yes, hi, this is Jason Hoppy.
Yeah, thank you so much for calling in. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you'd have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, thanks, members of the board. And Mr. Merly, my name is Dr. Jason Hoppy, 2865 Durham Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin. If anyone needs to get up and stretch, please do so, and you don't have to listen too much to what I have to say. Briefly, I've been a primary care physician and a hospital physician here in Green Bay since 1998. I have four children, ages 10, 11, 13, and 15 in Green Bay Public Schools. My daughter has dyslexia. I have another child with special needs, so I really feel for many of the parents who have, who have called in with, with children with special needs. Clearly, this pandemic and, and the situation has been very difficult for these students and, and for their parents. That being said, as a physician working at the hospital level, we'll be working at St. Mary's Hospital, which is our primary hospital for taking care of patients with COVID-19 this weekend. I just diagnosed a gentleman in his 80s with COVID-19 this evening before I came here. I work at Free Clinic. Again, I'm seeing patients in their 40s as well as elderly patients with COVID-19. And anyone who tells you that as a county, as a state, as a nation, that we're winning this battle and we're ready to go back to school is not telling you the truth. The evidence doesn't support that. So the benefits of continuing to keep kids out of school outweigh the risks at this point. Okay, what's going to happen if we send kids back to school? Well, children are known to be vectors of viral respiratory and gastrointestinal illness. They will get sick more than once because infection with COVID-19 does not confer lasting immunity. So not only will they spread it to their classmates, who will bring it home to their parents and their grandparents and their friends and their neighbors, they will spread it to teachers and staff. I have been privileged to take care of people in Green Bay, including teachers and first responders and retired teachers. And you will have staffing problems as these people get sick. Who are our sub-teachers? Well, many of them are retired teachers who are at risk. Okay? Now, despite this, even though I've told many Green Bay Public School teachers they should not teach until there's a vaccine available, many of them will teach anyway because that's how much they care about students despite, despite being attacked, you know, on Facebook. Many of these teachers will go back and work because that's how much they, they care. Okay? So please stay the course and continue to keep kids at home until we have widespread vaccination. I don't see us being able to return kids to school until the, until the fall, until the fall semester next year. There are pros and cons of keeping kids out of school, as you've said. Again, I have, I have four children. My wife works at home with four kids doing virtual learning here. It's hard to get, hard to get care for my daughter with dyslexia. It's, it's hard to get care for my son with special needs. But I think kids are resilient, and I think we don't give them enough benefit for this resiliency. I think when we have a positivity rate of green, in Green Bay of 30% with the numbers which will get worse this winter, sending kids back to school is, is not going to help this. Okay, this is a long-term world war we are fighting. And what we need is, we need people to follow the evidence, just as you have tried to do. We need people to get vaccinated. Instead of becoming angry and attacking school board members, attacking teachers, what we need to do is use that energy to do what we know works. Getting vaccinated when kids and parents, of course, and our, our public school workers can get vaccinated. Washing your hands, wearing masks, not going to restaurants. So using this, this, all this energy, if we could just turn this to good and, and just get your neighbor vaccinated, just tell your neighbor, hey, maybe it wouldn't, it wasn't a good idea to go to the restaurants to, to, to do these things. Again, I, lastly, again, I've had the opportunity to teach at the Crocs Center in Tyco Mondo the last 10 years, and getting 10 kids just to stand six feet apart in a large gym is very difficult for me. And I don't know how you're going to do this even with small class sizes. So I'll take, take mine there. And again, thank you so much for your work, all of you, and thoughts and prayers to everyone who's called in. Everyone have a safe Christmas. Goodbye now.
Thank you for calling, Dr. Hoppy. Appreciate it. Bridget, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for taking the time to call us this evening, and thank you for being so patient. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'd have five minutes to address the board.
All right, thank you. My name is Bridget LeJoyce, and I live at 3063 Essendon Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54311. Thank you for taking my call this evening. No one chooses to live in a pandemic, and we can all agree that this has gone on longer than anyone anticipated. Even with the vaccine, there are no guarantees that this will be eradicated anytime soon. Children under the age of 17, the vaccine has not been tested on them yet. So how do people expect the vaccines to magically open schools? We need to learn to live with the virus, not avoid it. Mr. Merly, you said in a statement to WBAY that the first priority of school districts is the safety of the students. That is wrong. The first priority of the school district should be to provide the students with an education, a quality education, a free and appropriate education, and on that front, you have failed the 21,000 students of the district. In the last nine months, we have learned that schools and school-aged children are not spreaders of COVID. Every expert from those in the mental health field to those working with COVID on a national level agree that students belong in a classroom. Why can't the board follow the science and put all students in a classroom? Every one of the board members, you are elected to represent your constituents, not push your personal beliefs and feelings upon the 21,000 students. Board members aren't paying attention to the hundreds of stories on how virtual learning is failing and harming our students. There is no concern expressed for their mental and emotional health. Why are students the ones sacrificing the most with their mental and emotional health as well as an inferior education? In no other profession do the employees tell their employer what parts of the job they are willing to do. Teachers must do the job they were hired to do, stop making excuses and find solutions. There is no ideal situation, and the students shouldn't be the ones making the sacrifices. Their futures are literally at stake here. High school students are missing out on many post-secondary exploration opportunities. The chance to play sports and be recruited. How could you continue to justify the denial of their future? All students, regardless of age, deserve to have the choice to be in a classroom. The failure rate for middle and high school students has more than doubled, yet the only in-person option keeps them out of school indefinitely. These are the students who need the classroom the most. The fact that graduation requirements and grading policies need to be dumbed down to accommodate for the amount of poor grades should be a wake-up call. Instead of putting a Band-Aid on the problem, fix it. Students desperately need to be in a classroom. Put all grades in a classroom and don't leave any grade behind. You've had nine months and $8 million in cares money to put together a plan to provide in-person schooling. How exactly has the district been working on this, other than stick their heads in the sand and hope it goes away? As parents and guardians, it is our choice to assess the risk of in-person schooling. Not have the district representing the select few or a union tell us what is acceptable. Those who feel virtual learning is best should be able to keep that option. Please allow families the choice of whether to return to school and extracurriculars in person. Students' mental health and emotional health is just as important, if not more, than physical health. Why is sacrificing that which we know will take years to recover from and we know the students are suffering from better than a less than 1% chance that they could get a virus? Those who feel virtual learning is best should be able to keep that option, but their belief, it doesn't, excuse me, it doesn't need to be a one-size-fits-all, and we aren't asking those who feel strongly to give up their virtual. On a personal level, my two high school students are becoming increasingly frustrated and unengaged as time goes on. I don't have enough time to tell you all about their struggles. Both are normally A students who have fallen behind. As parents, we have tried all the tips in the school district, contacting teachers and guidance counselors if needed, all to no avail or no suggestions other than the teachers are trying their best. It is time to step up and do what is best for the students education-wise. It is up to the parents to decide what is best for them safety-wise. So please allow all students not just to select few grades. The opportunity for the excellent education, Green Bay Public says it provides all students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for calling tonight, Bridget. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jennifer, are you there?
I am. Thanks.
Yep, thank you so much for taking the time to call in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you then have five minutes to speak to the board.
Great, thank you. I'm Jennifer Sajinski. I live at 2645 Seneca Court in Green Bay. Good evening, Superintendent Merly and board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Good evening, Superintendent Merly and board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak in the spirit of collaborative problem solving. I want to start by saying that no educator ever planned for this. As a current teacher with twenty-two years of experience in school counseling, at risk in special education. I fully understand the hardship, difficulty and strain this has put on limited resources as we all try to do what we think is best. To educate our students while keeping everyone, students, teachers and families safe. I am grateful to all of my children's teachers for continuing daily to try to find ways to make it work. That said, I am frustrated that our district schools are not anywhere near being met with a hundred percent virtual learning. Several speakers tonight already covered engagement and excellence, so I'm going to move forward and really dig into equity. Equity does not mean the same. It means giving people what they need in order to be successful. Our district is one of great diversity and the reason my own kids transferred back after attending a less diverse suburban district. Sadly, equitable opportunities are not being offered when compared to every single district surrounding us within five counties. Districts with less racial and socioeconomic diversity. All are either in-person, in-person hybrid, or offering co-curriculars right now. West of here, Howard, Slomko, DePierre, Ashwabanon, Pulaski, Freedom, Seymour, Luxembourg, Catskill, Wrightstown, all have some sort of in-person options right now. Students in our district are some of the most disenfranchised, yet we refuse them those same options. We should be offering more opportunities to Green Bay students because of their diversity, not less. Many upper-class white families have moved to those suburbs where their children have options afforded them while our students do not. I know many Green Bay teachers who live in those districts, and they allow their kids to attend school in-person and events right now. While they stay home to teach our kids in the name of safety. I know one Green Bay administrator whose kids attend a district that is fully in-person, and he coaches a high-level club team in-person right now. Another administrator who is out at a local bar this weekend, not socially distancing. A Green Bay teacher who is teaching from Hawaii right now and can travel but not be in the classroom. Since when do we allow hypocrisy such as this to be the burden shouldered by our students? Those staff members should be fighting to be in school since they can be out and about, and what's good for their own kids should be good for ours. Savage inequalities when they can self-serve their own but not our children? It is backwards for our district to think that we are protecting our students of color. And students of poverty by restricting their access to a free, appropriate public education. I firmly believe keeping our urban schools closed while suburban districts are open or hybrid is tantamount to separate but unequal systemic racism. It keeps achievement gaps for our most disenfranchised students growing and doesn't honor those students' rights of faith. Dialogue that intimates that since the crowd at the rally on Saturday was primarily white, we could not possibly represent the needs of students of color is disturbing at best. What is correct is that I cannot best speak for those families. They have their own voices and perspectives that they are the best ones to share. But when they aren't or can't be present, who will be their voice? The misconception that because black and brown families weren't proportionately represented, that they don't want their kids back in school is a faulty and very dangerous assumption. What is the proportionality of board or staff ethnicity to student population? I understand, fulfill my privilege and biases, and work hard to represent all regardless of race, ethnicity and socioeconomic backgrounds. I pride myself on being a champion for justice and equity for all, and in fact, was in attendance with an Oneida mom. But remember, you can't always see race. I was also there with a teacher from the district who has shared her concerns with me about violence she has witnessed at students' home while teaching virtually. But who is too scared to speak up about her desire to be back in person due to union colleagues shaming her. Silent minority with regard to the union? Hmm. By the way, I belong to the same union. As a woman who grew up in a family struggling with poverty, domestic violence, substance abuse and incarceration. I personally know that education is key to a better life. I worry that we are adding to rather than removing barriers to our students. From gaining an education that can eradicate racism and the cycles of abuse and poverty in the name of health and safety. We must consider not just protecting physical health for all, but also protecting mental and social health. I am shocked that some would dare use race to justify keeping our schools closed when we are hurting minorities. And others by keeping schools closed and achieve and increasing achievement gaps. Bottom line, families should have a choice based on their own unique perspectives and needs without having to flee to suburban districts to be able to make those choices. I am not asking for one hundred percent in-person. I am asking for choice. Virtual should continue to be an option for those who are thriving or for those who are risk averse. In-person should be an option for those who are not thriving and who are risk tolerant. Equity does not mean one size fits all. It means individualizing. Other districts, including the one I teach in, have been implementing new normal procedures, and it is working and can work. Five days a week in person where I teach, my students in my school have stayed safe. We have not had rolling closures as people are hypothesizing would happen, and we have done well overall. There is a lot of misinformation and fear out there by people who have not experienced even trying it yet. It is. I'm done in one sec. It is Green Bay's obligation to provide options for all. Together we can. Thank you so much for your time.
Sorry about jumping. I just wanted. I didn't know if you heard. Thank you for calling in.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. Bye bye. Josh, was that the last one?
That is the last one.
All right, I lost. I lost track. Thank you very much for facilitating that for us. All right. That wraps up number two, open forum section of our agenda. So we'll move to the consent agenda for approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Before we take the vote, is there anything on the consent agenda anyone would like moved for discussion? All right, hearing none. We can take a voice vote on this. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Either way.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Pass seven zero. All right, that takes us to, we have nothing for withdrawal, takes us to the presentation section, the legislative update. Given Vice President Shelton's recent election to our state legislature. Trustee Warren suggested that we appoint her as our legislative liaison, given that she will be doing that work on a regular basis. So with that being said, the legislative update from now on will be given by Christina. So Christina, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Eric. So I won't go through this line by line. It's a detailed document here in front of you. Just trying to get all of the information condensed. There's a lot going on so that everyone can follow up and sort of look at it within your own time. Just a couple of things to highlight to the group and to the community. The first is that Governor Evers does have a public listening session on Wednesday, December sixteenth. At six o'clock, that's this Wednesday. You can call in, you can register and give direct feedback. It is a great opportunity to speak about the budget and how it pertains to schools and education. We had a lot of parents and staff and. Community members talking about that tonight. I did put the registration link in here. It also is streamed on Wisconsin Eye. If you don't want to. Provide comments, you can also just listen in, which is another great experience. I did put information in here, and one of our callers tonight did reference some of the legislative. Packages that have been put forward. There have been two in the recent month, and I couldn't remember, Brenda, if you had included. A Governor Evers's package from back in in November, so I just included it here. Nonetheless, with links to a couple of different articles and just highlighted some key pieces that would specifically. Impact school districts, not just in Green Bay, but across the state. You'll see Governor Evers's. Package here talks about waiving student assessments and report cards. And I did put some information in here as well around evictions and foreclosures and just. Things again that I think may not necessarily be directly connected to our school district and school board work, but. Definitely through our programs and our community outreach and our students and families, thought that would be of of interest to you. You also see here that the Wisconsin Education Association Council President. Asked the Department of Health Services to put in place statewide gating criteria, and that's mentioned in that article. Scrolling down to the Assembly COVID Plan, again, there's a there's a link in there for you. Some of the key pieces that I thought were important is that this would require teachers to be physically located in buildings. It would require a two-thirds vote for virtual instruction. One of the big ones that just came out last week with the Fiscal Bureau memo shows that. There was a provision in the this package that said that school boards would be required to pay parents three hundred and seventy-one dollars to each student's parent if. We they provided virtual instruction for more than half of the year. The federal or I'm sorry, the Fiscal Bureau estimated that just for Green Bay, this would cost us. Over seven point five million dollars in potential payments to to parents. So just important to note. And then down here, just two other quick updates. There's some really great. Updates coming out of the Wisconsin Policy Forum. There's one in here about property taxes, another one about the state budget as we're going to be going into that. Process with Governor Evers, and then down here trying to put some. Detail into some of the discussions that are happening at the federal level about a hopeful federally relief bill. By the end of this year, and just some of the different things that are being discussed in Congress right now that could impact. Us both at a district and a community level. So. I'll pause there. If anyone also has any feedback on the formatting of this document, this is the first time I put this together. You know, you feel free to reach out and let me know. I feel like the links and some of this information is important as there's so much going on, but I'm certainly. Happy to receive feedback. So I'll pause there.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Christina, have we given consideration to responding or giving feedback on the GOP's COVID-19 plan?
We we have not, but we certainly could submit something or put something together as a board.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's. I don't know, put some context to it related to our district might be good.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Brenda. I can follow up with Eric and Steve about that, and we can loop you in, and maybe we could put some ideas into. Into the works in the next week or so.
Okay. Laurie Blanks, Laurie Blanksley will often help, you know, with thinking around that too, so we might want to loop her in.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that. I'll take note of that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Christina on her update?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rhonda. Go ahead.
That's okay. Christina, do you know when or did you mention it? I might have. I take notes when I'm in a meeting, and so I was writing down some of the things. But may have missed, when is the vote?
For which, for what?
On that GOP's legislation.
They're not scheduled for a vote at all right now. No, no.
Okay, so it's just taking feedback?
Correct, yes.
But this is legislation that they would potentially vote on if they were scheduled, or when do you anticipate that that might happen? Because obviously, it's something they're putting out there.
Honestly, I don't really know. The Senate has had some discussions about what, you know, the what they would like to see happen and as a response to COVID and and also. Taking into consideration the governor's budget, but there's been some back and forth, but I don't personally see any. Signs that there's going to be any moving of this or any vote anytime soon. There's been sort of a stalemate. Many people will describe it as that between the governor and the GOP-controlled state legislature, but. I will let you know if I hear anything else.
Okay, I guess I'd I would wonder if there isn't a vote scheduled, why we would spend too much time. With the response. If there's no vote scheduled, I'm not sure why we would. Do that, knowing what's in front of us, knowing what we have to deal with right now, the priorities that we do have. I'm just wondering, maybe if that's just speaking for myself, if there's no vote scheduled. I'm not sure of the the urgency, I guess. I'm just not sure about.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a good opportunity for us to speak to our state representatives and senators. Ahead of time before it gets to a vote so that they can think about that as they're drafting. Legislation moving forward because there's going to be different drafts and there're going to be hearings and comments on this. So. I think it's good to get out ahead of it. I'm still learning about the process, so I think we could, you know. Advocate and talk about how this would impact our district depending on how, you know, if we're looking at the governor's proposal versus the one coming out of the Republicans. So that would be how I would see it, but I would be curious if anyone else had any feedback about that.
I would just ask that we make sure we include what we're hearing, especially considering what we're hearing tonight, right when we think about. Or what our response would be that we're we're absolutely including. Some feedback from our families as well in part of that response, and it's not just a district response, that it's. It's heavily carried with response from the community.
Yeah. And maybe that's something too that Steve and Eric and I can talk about in our weekly about how we could gather that. I mean, not just for this process, but just moving forward. So that if the board decides to advocate at the state level that we're doing it from a comprehensive perspective of that advocacy.
I think it's important to do that, to make sure that it's not. We're not doing it through a political lens. We're doing it through a community lens. So that's what I would hope for.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Rhonda, for that.
All right, Laura.
I think that as board members, though, we have to kind of walk a delicate line. And not assume that we can necessarily represent. That our views aren't necessarily the views of our entire community. I might look at that proposal from the governor and say. I agree with all of that. Let's do it. But we might have a huge portion of our population here in Green Bay. Who are avidly against that. So something that I've always struggled with is, okay. If I represent a whole school district as an elected official. How do I? How do I balance that? And I. I don't know that I've ever quite come to grips with how to do that properly. So. That's why sometimes it it might seem like a good idea to just. Talk amongst ourselves about these things because obviously there's a whole bunch of this that would affect Green Bay. And. But I I try to, I try to remember that my my feelings about this, these political issues. Don't always align with other people's. Other people's views and and I represent them as well.
Which is exactly my point in saying that it's important that we bring the community lens into these responses. Yep, exactly.
And Laura, I'll also mention too, because I think that's an important. Thing that I need to think about, and you know, as as I'm wearing different hats, you know, how this, how how that is being communicated. So. Yeah, those are really good things to think about and. I will. I will let you know. I think we can think on that and come back and probably come up with a good plan, but. Good stuff. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Christina? All right. Thank you very much for that update. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, that takes us into the action items section, and obviously a big agenda item for us tonight is letter A. GBOP's Forward Update and Action on Instructional Model Gating Criteria. Before I hand it over to Steve, I I just want to say. Really just want to say thank you to all of the people who have taken the time, hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of people who have reached out to us. Telephone calls, emails, text messages, social media. The outpouring of support in our community around this issue is important. And the involvement there, regardless of where you fall. It's it's important for us to hear hear from you, and I I just want to reiterate that. You know, and everyone that I've talked to, I think that. You know, there is a unanimous consensus that we want kids back in school now more than ever. We want kids to be in school. We know that's the best place for them. We know the role that. Public education plays. And where we differ is on how we do that, and I think there are. There's a wide variety, a wide spectrum. Of of where you fall on that. And our challenge as a board is to figure out how to move, and that's what we're going to talk about here in a second, and I know that there's not. Agreement amongst our board members, just like there's not agreement in our community. So I would just wanted to reiterate that as as we move forward and have the discussion that we're about to have because it is incredibly important. because it is incredibly important. So with that said, Steve, I'll hand it over to you to go through that. Um, when we get to the gating criteria, I have a suggestion regarding uh the motion that I will um uh suggest when we get to that point. So um Steve, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thank you. And uh, let's see, I think I've got the ability to share my screen here. My floor deck. Eric, I can see your face. Can you let me know if you can see the deck in front of you?
Yep, you're good.
Reset size just a bit. All right. Uh, so what you have uh in the uh board docs is uh three different uh documents. I, the uh one I'm looking at right now is the uh slide deck. Uh, there's also uh the criteria uh which is uh blown up, and I'll I'll uh move to that one uh when we get to that, so that it's a little easier to see. Uh, and then the last one that draw your attention to is the plan book. Um, that's the most updated version at this time. After the uh board meeting this evening, we will update that uh to make sure that uh it contains uh any actions that are taken tonight uh at the board meeting. Uh, so I I so I again, I I'm going to walk through the the deck here. I and Eric, as you said, there's a couple of different things that um we may want to uh separate as uh we move through the conversation today. Uh, the uh slide here uh is the uh board uh approval uh from October 12th. I and I, that is what we propose to modify uh as we walk through uh the options that we had in front of us today. I, right now, this is the uh trend or the uh dashboard that you see that's on our website. Uh, it contains those uh current uh board adopted gating criteria along with the most up-to-date information we have on the burden rate uh in Brown County. I coupled with I um the uh staff members that are either quarantined or isolated uh at this time. See that on this slide. I and uh we keep track of all staff members uh that currently have reported uh issues that require them to be uh quarantined or isolated. I just a a note for you, I we believe that based on our conversations with staff members that um we do have quite a few staff members that have I that are uh impacted, that are at home, that continue to work. I and uh we took that into consideration as we considered our alternatives um for deploying staff members uh once we return uh to in-person learning.
Steve?
I, yes.
Um, can I know I've heard you say this before, but I think it's an important point to clarify tonight. Um, is it your understanding or your opinion that staff who are testing positive, um, they're not this, they're not in the building, and that's not a result of being in the buildings?
That's correct. I uh, we have I staff members that likely through I I interactions outside in the community uh are being impacted by this. They're either uh their own I uh personal experience with it uh or that uh are quarantined or isolated due to close contact with uh others or relatives.
Thank you. I think that that's a an important point to clarify in the conversation. Thank you.
I and I won't go through and read all these for you. Uh, I do know that I uh based on some conversations with some board members I am uh based on some of the conversation that we heard during community comment, uh, I did want to let you know that uh we are continuing to work on creative ways to work with staff who may be in that isolated or quarantined category. I, we have talked about I how when students are present, I if staff members are unable to be on campus, that we could actually have the students on campus, but uh bring the uh instructors in uh via remote learning. Uh, we'd then be able to deploy support staff into classrooms to provide assistance and supervision until such time as the teachers are able to come back. Uh, so this slide uh just depicts some of the efforts that uh are currently underway uh to try to increase both our number of certified staff uh and substitute staff. I and I, as you go through there, hopefully, I what you see in front of you is a pretty robust effort by uh members of uh our team uh to ensure that we do have enough adults available to provide education for our students. I regardless of whether or not I which above or modality of learning we have students in. I and uh I'm going to take just a moment here to break out on this one. I and take a look at uh our gating criteria proposal. I and uh just now, does that transfer over, Eric? You see the big one now?
Uh, yeah, that's, I think that's
Thank you. Um, so one of the things that I uh we did was uh we took what was a a monolithic approach to it um and started looking at separate subpopulations of students uh and considered uh what alternatives we might have uh to reengage them. Uh, so I'm going to walk through the the first four uh because those exist outside of our general education model. Uh, so the first one on here is our special education students. Uh, and our special ed uh students all have an individualized education plan. Uh, they work directly with our special education staff to determine uh the appropriate location uh for their instruction. Uh, and so we do not have a gating criteria on this. And I think uh uh we've been asked about this, and I want to make it clear that uh uh the intent here is to look uh first at the student's individualized education plan and the needs that they have uh and then balance that with the health and safety of the students and the staff. Uh, but to ensure that the uh first choice for determining their I uh location and modality of instruction is their individualized education plan. Uh, for some of our students, their IEP will not dictate that they're on site. Uh, and in that case, then they would follow the general education uh plan for their grade level that will look at uh as we move through the process. Uh, the next uh group on there is uh athletics, activities and co-curriculars. Uh, and if you want to think about that from left to right, uh athletics, obviously, are competitive sports programs. Um, activities would be uh clubs uh and other types of organizations uh that meet on a less formal basis uh that provide a uh social emotional learning and and academic uh outlet for uh children I at our uh schools. And then our co-curricular model, I think of those uh organizations that uh are not athletic but may have some type of competitive season, uh forensics, debate, show choir. I, the intent here was to make sure that we represented the full gamut of programs that are available to our children outside of their regular education day. Uh, and again, you'll notice on here, we have no gating criteria for those programs. Uh, we do have an application process for them. I and that asks them to go through and look at the health and safety concerns for each of their programs. Uh, they may differ from site to site. Uh, and then also look at the equity considerations to make sure that all children have an equal opportunity to participate in it. Uh, and then finally, after that, that there's an administrative review that ensures that there is oversight and support uh for those programs while they are on campus. Uh, again, no specific gating criteria except for all of these, simply a requirement that they uh go through that application process successfully. Uh, we put a first day of implementation on here for December 21st. I, that would give uh those programs the opportunity to complete their application. Uh, the review teams to go through each of those uh components uh for approval uh and ensure that we have both administrative oversight uh and in particular, I for uh the safety and uh security or safety and health standpoint, that uh we have custodial staff that are assigned uh to each of those areas to ensure that the sites are cleaned appropriately at the end of each day. Uh, the next uh band on there is our staff work site model. Uh, we allowed staff onsite uh right up to the end of September or the beginning of October uh when our uh current uh burden rate tipped over a thousand. Uh, we'd like to formalize that uh so that staff uh are able to follow along and understand um when they uh can and cannot be on site. Uh, so we set that uh gate point at a thousand. Uh, so as the we are under a thousand right now, uh we did allow staff back in, so we have staff onsite today. Uh, and they would remain onsite until such time as we predicted that uh that burden rate was over a thousand. Then the last category outside the general ed area is our specialized courses. Uh, back at the start of the school year, we had forty-two different uh courses that uh applied and went through a process, again, where they looked at the health and safety, they looked at equity, and they looked at administrative oversight and were approved for I uh participation on campus. Uh, again, when we reached the uh beginning of October, the burden rate went over a thousand. Um, we required those programs to move off campus. We would also like to formalize that uh so that the students and staff I can follow along with us and understand um when they would be allowed on campus and when they would be required to be off campus. Uh, you'll note that the first day of implementation there is sooner at December 17th. I, and that's because uh we do have I I on file the applications um from each of those programs. I, it would be a uh much more straightforward process to bring them back uh because they could simply reactivate their uh safety and health plan, I their equity plan and their administrative oversight. Um, so we would see them being able to come back in as soon as this Thursday. Uh, and then we would also open it up to other uh courses so that they could also go through the same process uh of applying for and being I granted the opportunity to come on uh campus until I such time as the burden rate was over a thousand. Let me stop there and ask if there are questions about those four categories that are outside of the general education model.
I don't know if you can see me. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Leave 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 this up, Steve, if board members of you just kind of speak up. I can't see all of you, but uh Rhonda, or sorry, Christina, um, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I was like, I'm waving my hands, and I realize you probably can't see me. Um, Steve, can you talk about why athletics and the co-curricular and the specialized courses of education does not include middle school or elementary? What's the thinking there with high school nine through twelve being the primary focus?
Certainly, we're starting with nine through twelve because we want to make sure that we are able to maintain uh the uh cleaning uh and sanitization process. Um, we're struggling right now. We're down eight uh uh FTEs in our custodial team, so we will go through a a redeployment process to make sure that we have enough people on site. I and I not knowing how many of those programs would be on site, um, we didn't want to put ourselves in a position where we had more programs and staff available. Uh, our plan would be again to start with our ninth through twelfth graders with a goal of bringing our sixth through eighth graders back next.
Thank you.
Steve, can I ask, the special education, we've had students on site this whole time?
Uh, they've been on and off. Again, once we reached a thousand, uh at that point in time, we had sent students and staff um back into an online uh environment. Um, working with Claudia and her team, uh the determination was that uh using the the burden rate was uh uh not going to allow us to meet uh students' needs, and so we would like to use the IEP as the uh the guiding uh factor in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Steve? Can you clarify, um, is it accurate to say that they haven't been in for about two and a half months?
I, the beginning of October uh was when we uh tipped over a thousand, and that was when we sent students home. So it would have been that first week of October, I believe. Uh, they were in school through, if I remember my dates right, I believe October fourth or fifth was a Friday. Um, so it would have been that following Monday.
So they haven't been back since?
That's correct.
So they really were just in, and then they were out?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Two questions, Steve. Uh, one on the the special education model. So uh you mentioned that the the IEP is going to kind of drive that. I'm wondering, um, you know, we heard from a few parents tonight whose special education students are struggling. Um, is there, you know, while the IEP by the letter of the law um may not require that they be back in school, would we take some of that feedback into consideration?
Absolutely. So those IEPs uh in the determination uh may indeed involve uh additional parent communication and make sure that we understand uh how the student is performing in the online environment. I, and then there's that direct dialogue uh between the parents and the IEP team to make sure that um we're able to deliver that IEP effectively.
Okay, thank you. Um, second question that I have is related to uh the, it says first possible date of implementation for December 21st. Um, when I think about, you know, it's a very broad range from athletics, activities, co-curriculars. Um, but those uh athletics that are tied to WIA sports, obviously, um those athletes are at a disadvantage compared to the other districts around us. So um I I'm wondering if if preference can be given to uh those WIA activities? And if there's any possibility, I I'd hesitate to to push to change that, but I would also um, you know, there's there's rules in place on how many practices uh teams need to have before they can compete. And even by gaining, you know, December 18th, 19th, uh it it would be better than the 21st. Is there any possibility that that could happen?
Uh, absolutely, in the sense that uh we have prioritized I our uh competitive uh activities, and so we look at athletics, we also look at uh other co-curriculars that may have a season uh and may have competition dates. Uh, again, I just use as example forensics and debate um or show choir. Uh, so we would prioritize uh those activities that have those types of organized seasons first uh and then move on to our club activities after that. I I'd hate to overpromise and underdeliver. Uh, I know that I the team said that they could guarantee uh that we could get folks in by the 21st. I'm certainly uh happy to work with the review teams to make sure that they expedite uh those applications and work with uh our uh custodial team to make sure that the buildings are ready to receive them. I am not unlike uh with our our specialized courses. As soon as the applications are received, and as soon as the administrative oversight is there to ensure that um they have the proper support in the buildings, including their custodial coverage, we'd be prepared to return them to campus.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more clarifying question. Uh, if you c account boys and girls and the varying levels uh for high schools, twenty-four basketball teams, just as an example, um, is that twenty-four separate applications, or is there some um grouping together?
Uh, we're actually going to look at sports I clustered together across all four schools. So um we will treat each of the major sports as as one application. Uh, obviously, things are going to be a little different from the health and safety aspect because there's a physical component uh that's directly tied to the school itself. Uh, but we will uh bundle those all together so that we can expedite that process uh and I and work to treat each of those sports uh fairly and uniformly across all four schools.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Yep, go ahead, Brenda.
Um, so on that, under the specialized courses one, um does that, I know that includes some of our tech ed classes. Can that also include some of the science lab courses, or do we have some of those courses in person?
I, absolutely. I, one of the examples that I I've used before when talking about this is some of our art courses. Uh, we have the ability to provide students I both access to materials, they need to come on campus for that. Uh, they may need to be able to bring I uh pieces of work back in that may need uh access to the kilns for firing. Um, but uh that provides access to for students who need to be on campus for something that can't be met off-campus, covers all of our classes. So I, any instructor who feels that they have a component of their course uh that can't be met off-site um has the ability to apply for that. It doesn't mean that they need to be on site five days a week, four days a week, three days a week. I mean, it can be, I need kids in one day a week for this specific activity that's uh directly tied to the uh curriculum and of course, so uh it literally is wide open for application.
Okay, thanks.
So it's, okay, so it's wide open for applications, but I've I've read the application form. I've talked about this application form, and I've I've tried to ask more gently about our, and the bottom line is, lab science classes aren't even bothering to apply because they know what the answer is. And you could have, you pro there probably are ways, you know, Wes could have, I would imagine Wes could have certain things, you know, where a single classroom of of twenty-some kids spread out throughout the Tooney Center certainly could meet social distancing uh standards for a some type of demonstration that's that's best in person. But the language is, the language is quite clear, is quite clear on those forms. If you know anything about the the history of this district, you you know that it's, you better not apply for that the way it's written, unless you've changed it uh or unless, and please tell me if I'm wrong, and other a a wide range of other courses have stepped forward and started filling out that that form, even if I'm not even saying, you know, the last two months have been very rough, maybe the last two months, there'd be There'd be there, if they were applying and getting a no answer, that's, you know, that's one thing. But like I have, I haven't, I've heard that maybe people aren't even trying. And so it it's, it looks good on a chart to say you can apply, but I, is that really happening? Are they really applying on one-off classes like this or is it just the programs? Is it just the the bridges and the and those are important, but are are there individual departments? Applying to to trying to apply?
Since we went over a thousand, I know we have not had many applications. And I believe that the rationale behind that is they understand where the burden rate was at. So they held off on their their applications because of that. We did have I classes that would have met that. Non-programmatic base that you mentioned earlier, go through it initially. And certainly if there are concerns about that, there's an opportunity for us to work directly with the building administrators. To make sure that the intent of this process is clearly understood and that then that allows them to work directly with their instructors. So that they understand how the process works and and how to go through the application for it.
It's fair if a thou- if a thousand is the metric I was just reviewing. So yes, we did unfortunately go over a thousand. It almost exactly lined up with the entire months of October and November, so there there was that bad timing. So if if a thousand is the criteria. But I don't think if if we're talking about specialized, you know, if we're talking about specialized course instructional model. Again, titles mean things and. I could see someone thinking that that means. AP Chem need not apply because that's not a specialized course. Under the normal way that we talk about a specialized course, it would be a it would be seen as a traditional course. And those. You know, I I think those are, you know, those are important opportunities. What what we're hearing, and I'm going to come back to this throughout throughout this conversation. We are, we certainly have had, you know, some some feedback that. Some people want to come back regardless of of metrics whatsoever and just sign a waiver is, you know, and that's. There's and there's others that that want to be closed, but what we're hearing from, we're hearing from a a broad spectrum of people. If we can't come back fully, can you provide some opportunities? And I think some single class opportunities would be important here. But I I wouldn't, I would look at that form and I wouldn't, even below a thousand, I probably wouldn't fill that out. Because it's written so averse to even. To even trying, so I have one question about special ed. So what percent, what percent of special ed kids? Would be getting some of their, some of their time in the building, what's the likely range for that under this? Because this is a big, this is a big deal, if we're going to say there's a group that there's going to be no gating criteria. And then there's going to be certain groups that have a very strict rating, what I consider to be a a strict grading cri- gating criteria.
I don't know that percentage, I'd have to work with Claudia to determine what an exact percentage is. But obviously, one of the the key criteria for that IEP process is the ability of. The students' needs to be met, first of all, in their least restrictive environment and their general like classes. So my presumption is that that when I talk to her, her answer is going to be that we are looking at our students first with the highest needs. And and then working backwards with the intent to. Ensure that students to the greatest extent possible are in their least restrictive environment. So for many of those students, although they may have an IEP, their general education education class may be their least restrictive environment. So certainly won't be all of our special education students, I don't have a percentage for you, but I can certainly get that.
Well, I mean, we're expected to vote on these criteria tonight. So I think, you know, if it's, I'm assuming it's a small percentage that would that would be on in the classroom. Because I would think the argument would be laid out. The the families would probably say, no, this is terrible for my kid. And then they would, the response would be, LRE says in the regular classroom environment is better for your kid. And. Forgive me my cynicism, but I think in a lot of cases, it would come down to the persistence of the. Persistence of the arguing because both both sides potentially. Potentially have a point, right? Because in normal times without COVID. We say a least restrictive environment to keep kids in class with their peers and not exclude them. And that's a valid goal. But I I see that it would probably be put out here a lot as a reason to not bring them onsite. Even though, you know, onsite might be what some of these kids are in desperate need of when you look at the whole. The whole picture, I also wonder to an extent, okay, if we are, if we are just going to say it's. It just seems to open some weird doors to say we're going to have unlimited. Unlimited gating criteria. If if the IEP says so, when probably no one's IEP explicitly says so. Fair, or I mean, unlimited is really high.
Sure, their their IEP isn't going to specify anything at all about when they should be back on campus. The IEP will be that opportunity for the the parents to work with the special education staff to look at the specific needs of the student. And if we cannot meet those needs offsite, then we would return those students on campus. But rather than our current model, which had said on campus until we reach a thousand for the gate. For some of those students, we could potentially be higher than a thousand and still retain them on campus. And and that would be again based on that collaborative meeting with the parents and the special education staff to determine. Where those needs would be best met for the students.
I mean, I like being open to to trying to meet. Meet needs, I, you know, we're talking about. It it's just, it's just strikes, it's very interesting that there is. The. The cap is. You know, we were, you send kids off when it was under a thousand, determine that's. Or when it was over a thousand, determine that maybe some of the kids even over a thousand needed to be there. Or if we have kids there over a thousand, are we? Are we taking advantage of the size of our? The size of our staff to allow people who are first volunteers to be back in the buildings during high COVID levels? Or are we just forcing back the the teacher as assigned regardless of that's who should be back first? Right, because we're over a thou- when the burden's over a thousand, most people I talked to both pro-opening. And pro, well, obviously pro-closing, even people who are pro-opening often will concede that over a thousand. You might have some transmission and safety issues back and forth between the schools and the homes. So did we do anything creative there or did we just? See, this is the teacher for that kid on that day, you're you're coming back.
So that's a great question and and I, we presume also that that if we exceed a thousand. We're going to revisit those issues with the parents to make sure that they want their children onsite. So that wouldn't be a mandate for those parents, we would have that opportunity to continue that dialogue with them. Our special education team has been very creative in working with staff to make sure that, to use your language. That we've got people lined up I based on on certification skill set to meet the kids' needs. Perhaps regardless of what their prior assignment was, so that we can best meet the the needs of the students. And accommodate the needs of the staff simultaneously.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I would like Andrew to clarify something if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
You had talked about an application process and then application specifically. And I don't, I'm not familiar with what you're saying, can you share what your concerns are more specifically about that application?
Well, the, sure, the form, the form that was to be filled out that was shared with us whenever we did these. Whenever we last did the metrics, I just remember the form. And it's in, it's probably back in board, board docs or board doc archives. It was a, I just remember the wording on the form that a teacher might do. If they wanted to request a lab science class or something to be onsite. Had certain things bolded and underlined in such a way that it's almost like. It, if you know the, if you know the history of this district and the unfortunate strong. And and by history, I don't mean two or five years, I mean thirty or forty. Of not rocking the boat, not upsetting the apple cart, to look at something like this. If you even did sign it, your your principal, a a principal who knows the history of the district. Would be very likely to say, hey, look, this says absolutely necessary, absolutely is underlined. Can we talk about whether you could demonstrate this lab on video or so- something? I could just see a lot of those conversations happening, but I don't remember the exact wording of it. If if we're going to say that under a thousand, we will have opportunities. And if we're saying that it's not just for the specialized programs, but it's courses that have a distinct reason. To bring someone online, on site. Then I think we need to make it accessible and make people know, you know, let people know that they're able to ask. And if it's asked when it's under a thousand, then. Okay, it's still, it's still a. It's still an interestingly wide range from a thousand all the way down to to two hundred. But it's also presumably smaller groups, controlled environment, twenty five. You know, twenty five kids into the Tooney Center in in West, that would be a social distant opportunity, so. Yeah, but I don't remember what exactly was on the form.
Okay, okay, and that's fine, but I guess what I'm, what I like to walk away with right now is. You have concerns about it. Are those concerns something that anyone recognizes? And probably Steve, you'd be the person to ask about. Before we move on to something else, is the application, does it have a lot of barriers? Do you believe it does? Can there be something done with it? Is this a real issue in the first place? Just never seeing it, it's, but hearing about it and knowing there are concerns. I trust Andrew Andrew's judgment on that, so I just would like to know what you think about that.
I do know that our building administrators are ready to go on this and and they are encouraging their staff to apply. So, you know, to Andrew's point, and again, you know, I I unfortunately I don't have that depth of history that he does. But our intent is to make sure that our building administrators are comfortable with the process. That they are able and willing to advocate for their students and staff and assist them in completing those applications. The intent certainly is not to stack the deck, if you will, I against any particular type of class. Again, we recognize that for some classes, one day a week, maybe all that they need to get in there. And and really enhance their student experience. And so I, you know, I entered to your point, like a biology lab, a chemistry lab. Certainly, there are other components of the class that might be better than online.
Yeah, one one day, you know, one day a week, you know, you know, one day a week could be huge.
Yeah.
Especially when you talk about, especially when you're talking about adding up some of these one day a weeks now. Now maybe we're getting some inner, however, again, and and see, this this is what. This is what I'm not doing anymore is I'm not, and there's no, there's no motion I can make. That really says, that really says that and to try would take up a lot of board time and probably come up with something other than what we needed. There is so much invisible, unintentional, invisible action and history. If if you're saying that the directive going out to to principals. Is that below a thousand is a point where staff are welcome. And should be encouraged to apply whether they're in a discreet specialty program. Or have needs specific to their course. Then I look, I look forward to that happening and and hearing more about it.
Well, I, what I can do is I can tell you the intentions behind it. And the intentions behind it are to make sure that I our our building administrators are comfortable with the application process. And that they are able to explain it fully to their staff, that they're able to work with their staff to complete those applications. Such that they come to those review groups with the detail needed for them to go through the process. And that certainly were applicable, that we provide those opportunities for students and staff to be on campus, that's the intent behind it.
Okay, and and I could, because I, it seemed that maybe it was more about, and it's it's obviously important that bridges and. City Stadium Auto and things that, you know. Aren't are completely essential to be, you know, on site. But I would, I would put, you know, certain things like a lab, a lab science course right. Right up there, so, you know, if if those things start to happen. But then I I guess part of me. Part of me, knowing that there's an, there's a second equity committee that has to sign off of it. I just see, are they going to get cold feet because Wes is doing it and Preble isn't and therefore it's not equity?
So one of the things that we are going to do, and Eric asks us, we're going to treat our athletic programs as as one. To make sure that we are working through those as quickly as possible so that they're ready to return to competition. With our academic programs, we will treat them individually. And again, much of that has to do with the facility and their ability to bring students in. Obviously, we have different issues that we need to consider. One of the other things that's that's important is that not only do we need to consider the individual course that's requested it. We need to look at it in concert with the rest of the courses that have also gone through the application process. So that we can ensure that we've got an appropriate balance of students in the building. So those are the types of things that they'll take into consideration as they go through that process. But I guess, you know, to your greater point, Andrew, and. All I can really do is I can, I can provide you assurance of the attention intention behind it. And and the conversation that that I've had, both with the administrative team that oversee oversees the reviews. And also with the building administrators. The intent is not to set up a a false sense of opportunity for staff. We want to set up a genuine opportunity for them to bring students back on campus. Where we have that opportunity to enhance their education, to meet needs that couldn't be done offsite. And and to balance it with all of the other requests that are out there. So I, the intention behind it is to actually implement it.
Okay, so if we pass, if this, if this passes as part of, as part of tonight's metric. Then we would expect since we, although it may, there may be some processing time and time to sort things out. And make sure not too many things are in the building at the same time. We would, we could reasonably expect that some of these classes, some of these are lab science, whatever. If have either started the application process already or more would apply before we break for Christmas and New Years.
Yes, and and again, because we have some of them that have already been approved. They would be able to be fast-tracked for return to the classroom.
Those are the programs though, right? Are there some other ones?
That would be classes and programs, I mean, when you, when I, you know, we talk about it as special education, specialized. Courses because many of those courses are are individual, you may look at them as a program, but it's an individual course. So if you're looking at at bridges, right, the students are taking a class or City Stadium Auto, they're taking a class. So we're approving it by by class embedded in those programs.
Is there something other than bridge, what what other than bridges and city, city stadium auto? Or like, can you tell me one that's been approved besides those?
Sure, I'll let Vicky jump in here in a moment, but I can tell you that our nursing program. Sure, I'll let Vicky jump in here in a moment, but, uh, I can tell you that, uh, um, our nursing program, uh, would be another one. I, and I can't see, Vicky, if you're on.
Vicky, Vicky's here, yep.
All right, great.
Uh, bilingual GED class, onsite, uh, special, um, mental health services support at a few of our schools. Um, youth apprenticeship, senior internship, new to country support, graduation specialists, gifted and talented. High school, hands-on art classes, interventions, agri-science lab.
Okay, so these are all things that are maybe we're in the hopper or are close to getting started now that we're under a under a thousand, cause there's, there's a big, there is a big difference in the lives of kids if they, if they're, right, if they're are from, you know, when we get to the general metrics, I, I see a hundred is something that we won't hit this acadu- I hope, I hope we do. Um, I don't think we'll hit it, uh, this year. Maybe after very widespread vaccine adoption, right towards the end of the academic year, maybe. But I think what's, if kids are getting in and, you know, the average kid has, you know, maybe they are, maybe they are eighty percent offsite while the metrics are still high, but the, like that. Going from never to one or two things on campus that many kids would have every week, that starts to, starts to change things a little. It doesn't solve the problem, but it, now, now that they're in the building, right now, some of those concerns about, uh, reportable issues and things, or, or if a student needs to stop by student services to talk about concern, they need to bring home, you know, lunch for them and siblings while they're already there, you know, that, that makes a lot of things better, so. I'll be cautiously optimistic about what this might do.
All right, um.
I have a question, Eric.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, what, have we talked about providing, um, transportation for any of these programs? Or, um, when they're all in, in piecemeal like that?
We have not yet. Uh, that certainly is an operational challenge for us. Uh, if we're not running regular transportation routes to get kids to and from school, if you have kids in one day a week, uh, maybe they might be in in the morning for this class today and the afternoon, that class, uh, two days from now. So we don't have a logistical solution for that right now.
But it's something that you're, uh, if this passes tonight, you'll start looking at?
Absolutely. Uh, food, food service and transportation logistically caused lots and lots of challenges for us. Uh, but, uh, we are very fortunate that the teams that work with, um, those two areas of operation have been very creative, uh, and, and working to make sure that they can meet as many kids' needs as possible. So, uh, there were our conversation about this and, and, uh, certainly ready, willing, and able to step up and, uh, try to come up with some creative solutions.
And then, thanks, Steve. And then, um, one more question about, in the special ed realm. Um, we've, we've heard a lot from tonight and also, um, emails that we've received of kids that, you know, their special ed needs need to be, um, provided in a, a general education classroom, and yet they're, they're really struggling. Have we, um, started to, to look at, at, uh, that, um, group of special education students? The ones that, and again, I'm, I'm kind of looking at, can, can those students have enough? And I'm probably at this point, we're talking about, um, elementary kids, cause we've talked about, you know, secondary kids coming through school. Um, but until we hit that, um, the gating criteria for elementary, I'm just wondering if there's a way through special ed at the elementary level to, um, allow kids to come in for, for some of their instruction or some support or, um, you know, whatever it is that the, that they deem as necessary, even though it's not directly in an IEP because the IEP was written before we went into virtual education.
So one of the things that I think is important to keep in mind there is, yeah, first of all, we are looking at, uh, while with, uh, if you look at the chart with athletics and with our specialized courses, athletics activities, co-curricular and specialized courses, we are looking at our high school students. With special education, we are looking at pre-K through fourteen, so it's all of our children, uh, that qualify for special education services. Uh, and then, uh, there is, uh, through this process, uh, not only the opportunity to review the current IEP, uh, but, uh, keep in mind that there is the opportunity to review the IEP itself. Uh, and then allow that team of parents and special ed educators, uh, to make appropriate decisions for the children contextually driven based on, uh, the issues that we're facing right now.
And that's, is, has that been done or is that communicated to families? Um, you know, I guess I'm just thinking of the ones that, um, are really, the, the parents are really struggling to figure out how to support their child.
And so just a reminder with the IEPs too, that, that certainly there are legal requirements that they be revisited and on an annual basis. Uh, but parents have the, uh, the ability to initiate, uh, that dialogue with our special education department uh, and initiate those reviews. Uh, and so there is an opportunity for parents whose children are struggling to make sure that they have that uh, appropriate dialogue with their special education team, so that they can make the right determination for each child separately, individually.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, but, but let's, let's be, let's be a little, let's be a little realistic about, about struggling families uh, during, during a pandemic, single parent, working families for whom already, right, already getting to the, you know, to the IEP meetings, uh, just the normal ones in normal times. That's a lot of meetings, you know, there's going to be, uh, there is a differential in how much access people reasonably have to that process, even if it says on paper, any parent can call at any time. And I would absolutely be worried, and this is, this is why I proposed, uh, this is part of why I proposed an ombudsman position a while back to, um, before your time, Steve, uh, you know, there's, I, I, I fear that, um, I guess, I guess if I had a kid with an IEP, I bet I would, and, and I felt what was best for my kid was to get the kid onsite. I bet I would probably get it so that it was just too much trouble for you to not have my kid onsite, uh, fair amount of the time. I, I, I could probably swing that. Um, from my position of knowledge of, you know, knowledge of the system and a work schedule that would allow me to pursue that and do all the meetings needed and stuff. So, i- it's not quite so fast when we say any parent can revisit it at any time. There's, that's not without barriers and we have to at least be aware.
Well, Andrew, can I jump in here? I mean, I think what, what I'm hearing you say and what I'm hearing other board members say is that we would be interested in removing as many barriers as possible for parents to get involved within that special education process and to expand opportunities to offer possible individual in-person learning experiences for those kids. Um, on an, and I, and I hear what you're saying, cause I was actually gonna say that when you jumped in about communication, cause that's been one of the biggest things about, uh, within our special education, uh, families, those, those students receiving those, is that communication has been difficult, there's a wide discrepancy of who has access to what in terms of elevating, um, needs and, um, also just knowing what's going on. So would you agree? I mean, that's what I'm hearing you say, if we were able to remove those barriers and expand communications, would that be something you would get behind is expanding that, that, tho- those opportunities to those kids?
Of, of course, I just, I just don't know how, I, I just don't know how to, I have no, since I have no way to direct that in the form of a motion, I, I can't say that that will have been accomplished today in an official manner. But of course, I am for anything that, you know, increases communication and gets more, sure, gets more, gives parents more able to be involved, uh, in this, in the special ed process, sure, it's, it's, yeah.
So, so moving this forward, if that's something that the board is interested in, Steve, I'm curious, and Eric, what your thoughts are on this? If, if that's the direction we want to go, as Andrew said, we're not gonna have a separate motion for that, but maybe that would be something in a few weeks, team you, Steve, your team could prepare a memo for the board and let us know what you're doing to advance those priorities. Is that, would that work?
Absolutely, and I think one of the things that would probably be a benefit for the board too is to, to know and, and to have, uh, some, uh, elaboration on the fact that I, although, I, Andrew, as you pointed out, uh, parent initiation is always an opportunity, um, but maybe not, uh, within reach, uh, for some of our families. Uh, that even though that's the case, our special education team continues to, on their, uh, own initiative, I look at individual students on caseloads, uh, review IEPs and, and where necessary, reach out to parents, uh, based on, uh, what the team believes would benefit the student, uh, which does not require a parent initiation, and I think it would be helpful if body and her team were able to share, uh, that process with you also, because I, while parent initiation is, is certainly always a welcome part of that process, it's also a responsibility of the school district to make sure that we're looking at those IEPs, and if we see gaps in, in implementation uh, in terms of best practice, that we can reach out with the parents and, um, suggest that, uh, an opportunity to reconvene and, and, uh, uh, look at services and placement.
Thanks, Steve, and I, I'm sorry, I just want to say one other thing, and thank you for that. Something to consider as well is what we heard tonight was that parents need additional communication about what we're doing behind the scenes so that they know that we're working to advance these. And so, maybe that memo or those communications wouldn't just go to the board, but would continuously go to the community and, and, and regular updates. I know you're doing those already, but maybe there's some other creative ways that we can let those families, let all families know, not just the families that are receiving those ser- services, but everybody.
Question?
Go ahead.
Um, what's the appeal process for an application that's denied?
Uh, so right now, uh, they go through each stage independently, so they go through the, uh, the health and safety review, they go through the, uh, the equity, uh, review, and then when they're done with that, uh, they come to, uh, an administrative review so that we can make sure that they have uh, the appropriate support, uh, while they're in the building. Uh, and, uh, we also, as part of that process, review the applications that were denied. Uh, I don't think we have an official appeal process in place for that. Uh, certainly something I can go back to the team and, and have them take a look at.
Um, I mean, I think that's an important part of this, right, is, is because if there isn't an actual, if there's no appeal process, um, I'm, I'm just not sure how this in itself is something that I'm, I'm just not sure about that. I think there should be an appeal process of some kind, um. How long do you think the actual, you said there's three steps, right? What's the timeline average for the application process to go through those three steps, would you say?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the timeline is for it. I know, uh, Vicky's been instrumental in, in working with the equity team. Uh, and, and I know she's on the call, I know we don't have, uh, all of our health and safety folks on here, but Vicky, do you have a, uh, an estimate on timeframe, start to finish for some of those early applications that we went through back in September?
Yeah, it's taken about four or five days.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, out of all the applications, only two were denied. Obviously, that the, uh, appeal process would be, um, feedback with why it was denied. For example, one was, uh, dual-credit economics class, and when we connected with NWTC, they shared with us that it could be completed virtually. Uh, and the other was a co-curricular, um, FFA, and at that time was, uh, we're on academics. Uh, so again, the appeal process in my opinion would be that might not have been met through the application questionnaire. Um, we did send back a few that didn't highlight the safety step, um, so they made the corrections and then came forward again.
I guess that.
That is the appeal process.
Okay, so I guess that would be my other question, um, and my last question would be, what would be some of the reasons that there would be a denial in the first place?
So, and if, if, uh, Vicky were cutting out a little bit, but, uh, if you didn't catch that, so for instance, FFA, uh, not a class, co-curricular, so at that point in time, it was denied because it wouldn't fit into the criteria that we were using to return uh, uh, those types of, of, uh, programs to campus. Uh, and then, uh, uh, that second one that she shared was the economics class that, uh, NWTC talked about meeting, uh, those needs online uh, without a need to come in. And then the other thing she shared, which I think is really important is, is this is not meant to be a punitive process, this is not meant to be, uh, some type of, of test uh, for folks, i- if they submit an application and we find a deficit in it, uh, that's our opportunity to go back and share with them, this is why, uh, the application wasn't approved and give them a chance to rectify that um, and bring that back in. Uh, and, and so to that extent, it's, it's really more than anything else, that opportunity for us to make sure that those programs that want to come back on campus meet those expectations and are able to do so.
Okay, I'm just concerned, and, and there have been concerns shared with me from some staff that it all sounds good, but in reality, it, it doesn't really always add up. And I want to make sure there's integrity in the process and the, and the experience that we're offering, that it's viable, so.
And, and maybe to Christina's point, uh, there is certainly an opportunity for us to share with you, uh, details on, on, uh, who has applied for what courses, um, at which schools. Uh, uh, if there are programs that, uh, that don't, uh, make it through that application process, uh, if there are classes that don't make it through, which ones are they? Why didn't they make it? Uh, what was the rationale for that determination? We can certainly put that data together for you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm gonna transition us a little bit here, but before we do that, um, I, I want to make a little bit of a proposal. So, uh, believe it or not, uh, I think this section of the gating criteria is, uh, the straightforward part and, and certainly the gen ed instructional piece is, is gonna bring a lot of discussion. I would, I would propose that, uh, maybe we, uh, make two separate motions and approve, uh, these first four um, and then take a separate vote on the second half of the gating criteria.
Eric, we have a drafted most, motion, uh, if we did want to go that route, can we bring that up on the screen so board members could see that?
Uh, yes, I think there, I, yeah, I think we did work on one. Um, Josh, do you have that available? It's posted in board docs? Um, it is not. Uh, Brayden, do you have a question in the meantime while we try to get that pulled up?
Uh, yeah, could I, uh, speak a little bit on the gating criteria from a student perspective before you vote?
Is it just on those top four or on the whole thing on the bottom?
I was thinking of just like gating criteria in general and, uh...
Sure, I, I, I'll just clarify for you and then you can determine when you want to make it. So what I'm proposing is that we vote on the, the special ed, the athletics, the specialized courses, the co-curriculars. We vote on that first and then we'll have another, you know, robust discussion, I'm sure, about the general gating criteria for general education and those numbers. Um, so if you feel like your comments fit better now, uh, I'd, I'd welcome them, and if you want to hold off.
Yeah, no, I can do it after. I don't feel like they, they pertain to extracurriculars as much, so.
Okay.
So Beth says that without someone making that motion, she can't bring that up. So, let me...
I, I can pull it up, Steve, do you want me to just, and then Beth can then bring it up on screen?
Sure.
Okay. Let me just give me one second. Okay, so, so the first motion would be?
You want to read it and if I can then check and see that I've got the right one, then I can share that.
Yeah, you, you want me to read it? Is that what you said?
Yep, and then I'll put it up to the. Yep, and then I'll put it back if I've got the right one.
Okay, um, so the one I have here is, I move that the instructional gate model gating criteria as patterned off of the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, for the Special Education Instructional Model, Athletics Activities Co-Curricular Model, Staff Work Site Model, and the Specialized Courses Education Instructional Model, with exceptions for individual students' free and appropriate public education requirements, be the basis for the Green Bay Area Public School District's transition for such identified programmatic models between the onsite blended and off-site instructional models, and that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis as presented be approved. Now, that was a little bit of a mouthful.
I'll second that, and I also have a, one more question and a comment.
Yep, so we've got a second, so we'll, we'll open this up for discussion, and again, sort of just breaking out those top four for votes. So Brenda, if you have a question, go ahead.
I just have a question related to co-curriculars because I think that that's probably the highest risk in terms of, you know, COVID spread and things like that, especially mostly with our athletics, I think. Are we going to be asking families to sign something that they acknowledge that, that there is a risk with this?
So we're not asking them to sign a, a risk acknowledgement. We do have a code in place that athletes already sign that, that would still be in effect at this point in time.
Can I just clarify that? This is Melissa.
Please.
Working with Tim Flood, we did not pursue a, a quote unquote waiver, Brenda, because a waiver for risks inherent to COVID is probably not legally binding on families. We did modify the language in the code that talks about risks inherent with participating in extracurricular activities and sports, and included the risks inherent in participating during the pandemic. So that is, they're advising parents of the risk as well as to seek counsel with their doctor in case their child would have some sort of underlying health condition that would make them more at risk to the, the pandemic.
Okay. And then I, I am going to support this. I struggle a little bit just because of, of the risk. But the, one of the, but I'm, I'm supporting it actually for two reasons. One, I think it's, it's a, a way that we can give that in-person opportunities for students. It gives them something to look forward to with their teammates and the other students that are in their groups. And I also feel that, that these are isolated activities. And so if a team in, in one of the schools does have a COVID outbreak and has to quarantine, the whole team has to quarantine for two weeks, or half the team, or, or whatever it might be, that it's, because it's an isolated and it's a coke, it's a, you know, it's not academically related, we are trying then to scramble to find, you know, some, some replacement for that activity. It's just people that join up are knowledgeable that, that that's, you know, a possibility that the, that the team will have to quarantine, just like backers and, you know, badgers and everybody has, have had to do periodically. As opposed to, you know, compared to when a class, if a, if a teacher has to quarantine, then we do have to figure out how to replace the, the instruction that goes on there. So I see it as a little, you know, there's fewer challenges with, with allowing these activities to happen.
All right, Beth, have you been able to add this into the board docs, or will we take a voice vote on this?
Nope, it's in board docs and I can open the online voting whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make some comments first, please?
Yeah, Steve, could you stop sharing your screen?
That's what I was going to ask, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, go ahead, Brenda.
Thanks. I just want to say that I'm very encouraged and thrilled to hear that this is going to be something we're going to make an attempt to do. I am very grateful to the coaches who are on board, who are actually enthusiastically on board and for their commitment to our students. So I'm very, very excited to be able to support this and just want to say thank you for doing that.
Can I jump in real quick and offer something because I know it's come up as an issue? I, I just want to make sure that, that people know that we have thought really deeply about how this not only impacts our students participating in these programs, but also the adults that lead the programs. So certainly, I, you know, this is a voluntary choice that, that the coaches and advisors make in those athletics, co-curricular activities and, co-curriculars and activities. And we may very well have folks that are in those leadership roles that have health conditions that may prevent them from leading. So we have a process in place that would say, for instance, allow that advisor, that coach to notify us that they are not able to be on campus and provide that leadership in that program. They could take a year's leave of absence from that, which would allow us to fill it on an interim basis for the year, which would allow that activity to move forward, but then would allow that coach or that advisor to step back in as we move into the next school year and resume their leadership role. So we have tried to think pretty deeply about this and recognize that although we would like to see those activities and those co-curriculars and those athletics restart, that we might have some adult leaders in those areas who might not be able to fulfill that.
Thanks for that, Steve. Christina?
Just quickly, thank you for this, Steve, and everyone for a great conversation. I'll be voting yes on this. I think it's a great way that we can work through and set up some processes. I think Steve, for me, and I've said this earlier, I think, you know, communication, we've increased communication, communication, community, it's like the main thing, transparency. And feedback is going to be critical to this, so please keep that top of mind. And we've got to engage families and students and everyone in these decision, decisions that we're going to be making. And I look forward to hearing how this is going to be implemented across our district, so thank you.
I think there was another hand.
Yeah, Andrew, did your question get answered?
It, it did, yeah. I think for, for me to be able to be on board with this, you know, knowing that, knowing that someone can without penalty pass this year and return to their, you know, return to their normal activity next year is, is critical for this to be a fair, a fair option, and that's important, but since that's, that's there, now I'm able to, to support that. If we were, if we were mandating people to come in for an activity who shouldn't be on site right now, that, that would not be the right, the right way to do things, so.
All right, if there are any other comments, Beth, we're ready to vote on this motion.
It's open.
Beth?
Yeah, you can take your vote verbally, Rhonda, if you're.
It's, well, I have to, I have to do this on my phone, and it looked like I hit yes, but it actually looked more like I, it showed up as abstain. I just want to make sure it's clear that I'm yes, that's all. I'm, I don't know what she saw, but it just disappeared and it didn't really show me.
I have you as yes, Rhonda.
Beth, I'm a yes. I don't know what's going on with my technology. I'm sorry.
No problem. I froze for a minute, too.
Oh, I see it now. Thank you.
And Laura, I think I'm just.
I'm not seeing it either, so can you please, uh, yes?
Thank you. All board members have voted, and all board members have voted in favor.
Right, so that motion passes seven zero. We'll now move into the second half of the gating criteria. I believe, Steve, I'll hand it back to you for a little more information.
Yes, yeah, let me make sure I've got the raise reading up here.
Great, I got it.
All right, so I will look to Eric or Brenda, whose face is I can see. Do you see the screen again?
Yep, gating criteria.
Thank you. Okay, so we've gone through that, those first four rows. So that fifth row is the general education model, and I'm going to drop down here for just a moment to take a look at those core indicators. Again, those fall into five categories: lowest risk, lower risk, moderate risk, higher risk, highest risk. Those should look familiar from the last time we looked at that. We did not make any changes to the first three. And, and then in the higher risk category, you'll remember that we had separated fifty to a hundred and greater than a hundred last time, so we still have those splits in there. Then the highest risk of transmission, again, we had that new category that's over a thousand. We talked about that in relation to the staff work site model and our specialized courses. So now, when you look up above, now when you look up above, you see that, you can see that application to our general ed courses, and those are for the majority of our students. And again, based on the model that was presented to you by our work groups at the last work session, we've got pre-K to five as one band. Middle school's been separated into grade six and grade seven and eight. High school's been separated into grades nine and grades ten through twelve. The recommendation, which is different from that model that we looked at in October, was that we would accelerate the return of our elementary students and our transition students of grade six and nine when we are under two hundred. I know the question was asked earlier, and so just a reminder that for the first time in quite a while, Brown County is under seven hundred for their burden rate today. That's been on a steady decline since last week. You remember that just a few weeks ago, we were over fourteen hundred. So the community seems to be making some appropriate progress. So we would plan on bringing those students back at two hundred. And then the burden rate, when it reached a hundred, we'd bring back those students in grades seven through eight and ten through twelve. And then perhaps maybe before you actually start discussing that, I will switch back over to that slide deck and just walk you through the last few slides on there because I think there's some extra information that may help. And then I'll bring this back up and, and try to get the questions asked and answered for you. If that's all right, President Van Hooen.
Yes.
Okay, so again, there's our gating criteria. We've got about five more slides to go through here. Again, the proposed blended model for our elementary students, starting on left-hand side, they'd be in class Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday would be virtual day, and no school for our head start and four-year-old kindergarten. And I, I know one of the questions that's been asked, and I'm sure we can have more conversations about this later, is Wednesday was a transition for us when we were initially looking at that cohort model. That time is now used for multiple activities. It is in place of the early release days that we had before. We're also using that for all the professional development and meetings that were scattered throughout the day earlier when folks were on campus. We're also using it as individual intervention so that teachers that need to meet with individual or small groups of students have the flexibility in their schedule to do that. At the middle level, grade six would be in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We would also look at students with disability and English language learners so that they would be coming in initially as part of that process and phased in. Wednesday would remain a virtual day, and initially, grade seven and eight would remain virtual. At high school, same model, grade nine in on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Again, looking to our students with disability and our English learners to come back in stages. A reminder now that with the board approval, we're going to look at specific courses that can return for onsite education opportunities. Wednesday again would be a virtual day, and ten, eleven, twelve in virtual until we reached a hundred with the burden rate. Some things to keep in mind, I talked a little bit about what the purpose for Wednesdays. And then one of the things that I think we haven't touched on yet would be that second sub-bullet, under the second bullet, we recognize, and it was made abundantly clear to us from the, the community comment to several parent meetings that we've had, that we have some children that continue to struggle academically and socially emotionally. And we would look for an opportunity to begin transitioning some of those students on campus in that, that interim between two hundred and one hundred. That would happen as a result of work at the individual campuses, working with teachers, counselors, and administrators to identify those children that are in most need and determine the appropriate way to provide some interaction with them on campus during that, that interim period between two hundred and one hundred. We also are looking for that opportunity for those co-curriculars to begin. We said earlier that we're certainly looking that right away for our grades nine to twelve, but do keep in mind that our intent is to phase those in, in grades six through eight as, as we go through the process of getting the high schools back up and running, and then determining from a coverage standpoint, how many of those co-curriculars we can bring back in. We know that they meet a significant social emotional need for our students. The, the blended hybrid model, I would, again, cover three of those mitigation strategies. We do want to make it abundantly clear to parents that we are going to struggle with that optimal six-foot distance at all times. We, we are going to struggle with that in classrooms that simply don't have enough space. We are going to struggle with it in common areas, always cafeteria, the library. We will certainly do our best to maximize the space. And, and remind you that the CDC said to the greatest extent possible, but we do want to make sure that there is not a false expectation that we will have six-foot distancing at all times with all students. I, the fourth bullet on there, again, we're already providing that opportunity now for staff to get back on campus. We know that there are many, many staff out there who have reached out to us, reached out to you directly as board members. Have a significant interest in getting back on campus. I was able to speak with several of them today. They're very pleased to be back. They know that teaching from their classroom even remotely is much better than teaching from at home. So they're pleased to be back in their classroom environment to provide instruction. Some concerns, and I know that there will be many more that'll surface today, but just a couple of them that have come up. I, that this is not equitable for our high school kids, in particular those of grade seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve. I, and, and the gates between when we return the sixth through ninth transition students and the seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve kids is tight between two hundred and one hundred. We anticipate that that gap between when the first group comes back and the second group comes back will be relatively short, but it will provide us an opportunity to make sure that we are able to transition those children who have not yet been in those secondary schools and make sure that they are prepared and ready when the student's returned. There was also a question about secondary schools in using a blended cohort model. We have been working throughout this entire process with both the districts in Brown County, those throughout the state of Wisconsin, and actually across the nation. We are struggling to find districts that have succeeded in what's called a high flex model, where teachers have responsibility both for the children sitting in front of them physically in class and also students who are off-site. We've actually reached out to higher ed here in town to understand if and how this is working. And, and much of the research that we've come back with says that it's difficult for everybody. It's difficult for the teachers to try to connect with both groups of students. It's difficult for the students who are in either of those modalities. It's difficult for the students who are in either of those modalities to connect with the other kids and that it has resulted for most of those who have provided that feedback to us in less than an ideal learning environment. And we've actually received a recommendation that if we're looking at that, we should look at either all in person or all virtual because those have better met the needs of the students. So for that reason, we've moved away from that initial cohort. We want to make this abundantly clear. I've had many parents that have written and asked, and so we want to make sure that this is clear. You will see this when the survey goes out to parents on Wednesday. Parents have the right in this process to request that their children remain virtual for the remainder of the school year. We are guaranteeing that opportunity for them through the end of the school year. So the key question that we're asking parents on Wednesday is whether they would prefer to return to campus or whether they would prefer to remain virtual. And for those that remain virtual, that opportunity will be afforded to them. A couple of things that are really important though for them to keep in mind. And if you look down to that fourth bullet, we are using local educators to provide instruction. We are not farming this out. We are not subcontracting with anyone else to provide services for our students. However, in order to do that, we can't guarantee that they will have the same teacher that they have today if they remain in that virtual program for the rest of the year. It's likely we're going to have to flex staff in order to meet onsite requirements and to meet those offsite requirements. And then if you drop down to that sixth bullet, students receiving services in reading, writing, math, or special education services, we're going to make sure that they are able to continue to receive those services virtually. So if you have a student that has any special needs and you would still like to have them remain in the virtual environment, you are not ceding your rights to those additional supplementary services. We will still ensure that you make, that you have those available to you. And then the last one on there, we will make sure that students are able to meet their attendance requirements and their credits towards high school graduation. We will use the district policies for grading and we will follow the district calendar. So parents will have that opportunity to choose to have their child enrolled in a fully virtual program through the remainder of the year and it will remain a Green Bay area public school district program. Again, we're going to reach out to parents starting on Wednesday. We're going to ask them to make that choice. They will have until the 23rd at 4:00 p.m. to complete that enrollment process. We will use all the current methods of communication to make sure that we're able to reach out to parents. And then the other thing that's important to understand is that when we get to the end of this process on the 23rd, we've already anticipated that we will not have a hundred percent participation. Our building leaders have been incredibly cooperative and supportive in this process. They're going to help us reach out to those who have not completed the survey. And although we will default them into the blended program, we will then reach out to each one of those family units for each one of their children to confirm that that is where they would like to have their children. And if not, then we will move them into that virtual program so that we can make sure that we staff appropriately for both. And then the last one, and I'm not going to go through this tonight, but it is attached to board docs. We have our reimagining school plan uploaded there. We continue to update that. That will be updated after tonight, posted online so that it's accessible for parents and the community so that they can see the work underway and so that they can also track the changes that were made. Right, with that, I'm going to go back to this slide. And Rhonda, I can see you. Do you see that slide with the larger chart in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Thanks, Rhonda. So again, now I get an opportunity for me. I also have multiple members of the team that are on here with me. We would be more than happy to answer questions for you. I hope make sure that we've explained it appropriately and if there are things that need additional attention, we provide that for you.
Steve, I have a question. So when we look at the sixth and ninth graders that we are bringing back, what happens with kids that are taking advanced classes? So you have, you know, you have a ninth grader who's taking bio. You know, how does that work and what does that look like?
That's a great question. And I know that one of the things that's a challenge when we deal with secondary students that we don't deal with with elementary students is they do have multiple courses and that they frequently cross grade levels. And so we may wind up in a situation where a child who's in an accelerated class, not commonly taken by ninth graders, may still be taking that class online while on campus in order to participate with the rest of their peers in that class.
And one more question, you had talked about you had eight open custodial positions currently. Is that going to be, I mean, we talk a lot about teachers and we know the challenges around teachers and staffing and we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough subs. I mean, that's a concern, but when we talk about food service and custodial, when we bring everybody on campus, is that going to be a concern? I mean, I know cleaning is going to be a huge part of this, right? And I'm just curious how that's going to work if we have eight open, currently have eight open custodial positions, what that looks like.
So I share with you that we are, over the course of the past couple of weeks, less concerned with teachers as we think about creative ways to beam them into the classroom, even if they're out on isolation or quarantine. We have other work that's done in the district that we can't remotely place. So think bus drivers, food service, custodians. We're far more likely, to be perfectly honest with you, we're far more likely to experience incidents where a classroom or a grade level or a school winds up going virtual because of our loss of that glue of support staff that make our buildings run. So that's a challenge for us. That's also one of the reasons that we're looking at staging this process and bringing our pre-K five, six, and nine students in first. That gives Mike and his team the opportunity to gear up, to make sure they're able to meet those needs so that hopefully by the time our seven, eight, ten, twelve students come in, we're able to guarantee that same level of attention to climb with innocent safety.
Yeah, sorry, I can't see everybody, so.
Thank you.
But I want to keep the screen up there, so we'll just.
This might be actually a better question for Pete Ross if he's still available, and I can't see if he is or not, but we recently received a really good memo from him regarding what CARES money has been spent so far and then how that will be utilized going forward. It sounds like there's a system where we have a certain set amount that's been allocated to our district, but we can spend it on, say, you know, PPE and then we submit reimbursement for that? And then I guess the overarching question here, though, is how will that money that we haven't spent so far facilitate or come into play when we, when our gating criteria is triggered and we are starting to have kids back into our schools? Is that, am I making sense?
Yes, you are, and I see that Pete is on screen if you're unable to see him, so Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to the CARES Act with respect to the question from the board member. We have until September of 2022 to entirely claim all the money. So the intention of the CARES Act is not only to help districts deal with protective personal equipment as well as sanitation, supplies, and equipment. It's also intended to assist our children as they do come back to school face-to-face so that we can provide services that those children need, whether it be educational or mental health services. And all of those things are going to be discovered as we bring children back to school and those needs to have those additional resources available are currently unknown. So we want to preserve as much of the CARES dollars as we can so that we can sparse them out over the course of the next year and a half.
Do you see, or maybe it's impossible to tell at this point, any additional money revenue coming that will, as time goes on and we have a better idea of the scope of the need? I mean, I know, Pete, you keep a track, you keep track of this sort of thing. I'm wondering if you can offer any hope for maybe even additional support from state and federal government?
You know, one of the advantages that you have as a school board is the direct connection to an assembly person on the board who's going to be intensely interested in what happens at the federal level or state resources. I do have a concern with respect to state resources and whether or not the federal government will step in to assist state and local governments through aid to the state. And then the state would then address local government situations, whether it be towns, villages, cities, or school districts, through those resources. So, you know, Board Member Sheldon will have a seat at the table, so to speak, with respect to what's happening from the bed to the state because I do believe our federal government has the responsibility to step in and assist state and local governments during this pandemic.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, the money hasn't been spent yet fully?
Certainly not, no. And our intention is that when our children are back face-to-face, some school districts, of course, have had some face-to-face experiences. And we have been virtual from the beginning of the school year. Our children will come back and when they do, will need additional resources. And we need to be able, as an organization, to support the needs that principals identify within their building to handle our children as they do come back, to provide the best possible services that we can for our children so they can be as successful as possible. So while we have a good supply of PPE equipment ready and waiting in the wings, it's not going to be collecting dust. It is there, but it is waiting in the wings. We have a long way to go to get through this pandemic. We're all not going to get our vaccinations tomorrow, as you're well aware. So when we do have our children back, we're ready to receive them with sanitation equipment, hand sanitizer, masks, and anything that the kids would need to be in school safely. Those materials are purchased and waiting in the warehouse, so we're ready. But I believe the greater need is going to be with human resource capacity to provide extra care for our children as they return for their academic well-being and their mental well-being.
Thanks, Pete.
Can I just ask a quick question, two quick questions? Steve, one of the things that I heard from parents was around the, the new cases per one hundred thousand with the five mitigation strategies. Can you, and I know we've talked about this, but we might have more people listening tonight who weren't here initially. Can you talk about why with the fifty to a hundred, a hundred to two hundred, why we're only looking at one to two strategies, whereas the twenty to fifty, you're talking about three to four? Why could we not do three to four mitigation strategies with the higher burden rate?
So those criteria are from the CDC. We anticipate that we will exceed that. So even if you go all the way over to the far right-hand side in the highest risk strategy, or highest risk of transmission in schools, and keep in mind that you just approved our opportunity to start bringing back students that in those athletics activities and co-curriculars plus our specialized courses and programs. We will be requiring facial coverings for students participating in those. We will be affording them the opportunity to practice appropriate hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and we will be meeting those sanitation requirements, cleaning sanitation requirements. So even all the way over on the right-hand side, we have a high level of confidence that we will meet those three criteria that the CDC established. So again, that language, and I appreciate you asking that because we don't look at that as what we will accomplish. This is what the CDC has indicated in their model. So we have a high level of confidence that all three of those will be met in each one of these categories. And then a reminder that physical distancing, we won't meet in any of the categories. And contact tracing, likely when the numbers come down, the county will be able to step back in because that winds up being a county responsibility, not a district responsibility. So if you look at that down on that left-hand side, factors one, three, and four, we will meet all three of those in all five categories.
Thank you for that clarification. And again, just want to highlight and ask again, where are we getting these metrics for each of the, the levels of highest risk? Can you just once again communicate to the community where we are getting these numbers so that we're not just plucking this out of, you know, thin air?
Sure. So again, the three on the left-hand side are exactly what the CDC released. We didn't make any changes whatsoever to lowest, lower, and moderate. The CDC, if you look at their model, the higher risk actually goes from fifty to two hundred. You can see where we parse that and that's so that up above, we're able to provide a differentiator between when we bring the students back. And then their highest transmission is everything above two hundred. And again, we parse that because through our experience this fall, we have a level of confidence within the organization that we can support students on campus in those areas up to a thousand before we wind up starting to experience significant concerns about health and safety. So we've split those two, so we've taken a liberty with those, those CDC guidelines and split the higher and the highest.
Thank you. And I do have one additional question, I'm sorry. With the, with the blended model and, you know, seven, eight, ten through twelve, sort of having this, what I'm hearing you say is that once we go through the process of families deciding whether to do blended or virtual, that there will be some flexibility here within sort of moving this around. I mean, are you, are you saying with pre-K to five, I mean, if we had a high number of families decided that to go blended, we may not be able to implement social distancing? We may have a number of kids in a classroom. Will there be a cap in the classroom and in the schools, like a smaller school compared to a larger school? I mean, how will your team navigate that?
That's a great question. So right now, with our pre-K to five students that are in their elementary schools, we're not placing a cap on the building or the class. However, we will work to balance, especially in our multi-section elementary schools, to balance the number of children that are in each classroom so that we don't have a classroom that perhaps has a large number of students and one with a small number of students. And then we will be working to contain the students to the extent possible in their rooms. So where you might have seen significantly more movement from students around the school, we'll do our best to keep those students in their classrooms. So rather than walking to various courses, those content areas may walk to them. And so the teacher may travel to the children as opposed to the children traveling to the classroom and that prevents them from potentially having to be within that socially distanced space and hallways as they're moving through there. There are some areas that we won't be able to do that. We anticipate students are going to be eating lunch in their cafeterias. And so we'll have to make modifications to our current lunch practices in order to make sure that there is as much distance as possible. And then to answer your first question, going back to that, as we look to bring in our secondary students, depending on the number that choose to be online and the number that choose to be onsite, remember I made mention in that parenthetical that students that require additional support onsite in advance of the model would be able to be brought in sooner. And so depending on what those numbers look like, we can be more aggressive or we may have to be less aggressive and how quickly we bring them in before they reach that next gate.
And you're talking there about seven, eight, and then ten through twelve?
Yes.
And would we, and depending on if this were to pass tonight and some, would we need to do another, would we need to take another board vote to shift the blended for seven, eight, ten, twelve? Or would, how to tell me how that works? So we have to come back again and talk about this? Or would, how, how to tell me how that works? So we have to come back again and talk about this?
Well, if it turned out that uh, we actually thought that we could bring them back sooner, uh, we would come back to you, uh, because we don't want to make that determination without being fully transparent, both for you and the general public about that. Uh, when you look at the current trend line, uh, we do anticipate that that gap right now, if the trend line were can, uh, to continue, uh, it's downward trajectory, that uh, that difference between 200 and 100 would occur relatively quickly. Uh, so the likelihood is we would not have to come back to the board. Uh, because there would be a very uh, small transition period uh, between those two. Now, if that stretches out, I, I'm not a, uh, an expert on that, and certainly don't want to make a prediction, but if that were to stretch out, uh, and we thought that we could be more aggressive than we were based on the number of students that were on campus, we'd certainly come back to you with a request to, to bring them in early.
Yeah. I, I, I have one other thing. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, this is going to take a lot of fluidity and flexibility and sort of responding as information comes in. I know that that's challenging, especially in a district of ours over, over 20,000 students. Um, you know, you think about operationalizing something like this compared to a, a district of 500, right? And I'm not, and it's not to say that we shouldn't create, um, we should be creating efficiencies and removing bureaucracy, right? But how are you going to support your teachers and staff, um, and your team to be able to be nimble and sort of move on a dime, um, in a way that maybe they've never been challenged to do that before?
So I think one of the things that's uh, really important to remember about this model, which is a little plus for us, is that we've got some space uh, in the system to work directly with staff on those Wednesdays. Uh, and, and remember, we gave up our early releases and, and we moved that into the Wednesday timeframe. Uh, so we do still retain that opportunity for our working groups, uh, which include staff members from uh, each uh, level in the organization. Uh, they will continue to meet. Uh, we have the opportunity to uh, to have them think through these. Uh, we also, uh, with, with staff on campus, uh, our, uh, building leadership teams will have that opportunity to have those conversations. Uh, and then that'll give us, uh, hopefully an opportunity, as you said, to be nimble uh, and to make sure that we're responsive to what our staff are seeing in the classroom and the hallways and common areas, uh, to make sure that, that we're meeting expectations, uh, but also working as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Steve, uh, when we met, when we went to chapel like five years ago, it feels like, um, what, how is that experience, how is the experience with this blended going to be different than what we saw there? I mean, there were negative impacts to instructional hours when you were looking at how long it took to get everybody to wash their hands enough. And one kid playing in an area, what does that look like? Is it different? Is what we saw at chapel going to be what students will experience?
I would say yes and no. Uh, we'll still experience some of the challenges of trying to make sure that we get students uh, uh, for instance, to and from the restrooms without interacting with other classes. Uh, before you to just run into kids in the hallway. We'll try to be very deliberate about that so that there, we minimize uh, instances where we're inside that six-foot physical distancing. Uh, we won't be able to eliminate it. We'll certainly uh, work to, to minimize it to the extent possible. Uh, I, I think some of the other things that you'll see in there, I, one of the things that, that we did in that room uh, was we tried to remove extraneous furniture so that we could make sure that students were appropriately distanced. Uh, we'll still do that. Uh, we know a lot more about transmission on surfaces than we did before. If you remember, uh, when we went to, to chapel at that point in time, uh, science told us that, that uh, surface transmission was a significant issue. Uh, and not to say that it's not, uh, but we know that the aerosols are, are far more pertinent to uh, the spread of the virus than, than the surfactants are. Um, so we'll still want to do that same kind of cleaning, but certainly uh, a different attention uh, to students' use of manipulables in the classroom. Uh, so some of the things that you saw will remain the same, uh, but I think you'd see some things that would be significant.
When you talked about, um, you talked about aerosols, do we have an understanding of air quality within the schools? I know Harvard had the big thing and put a HEPA filter in every classroom, and I'm curious what that looks like in our schools. I know we've done remodels recently in a lot of places. I'm just curious what that air quality looks like.
Sure. And there's a couple of things that we've learned there that are really important. We know about the movement of air in classrooms. We know about uh, the exchange with outdoor air. Uh, the, the science behind that has, has become far more robust in the last couple of months. Uh, Mike and his team have done a, a lot of work to improve the quality of ventilation uh, in the schools. Uh, and so, uh, you know, given a couple of months' worth of learning and experience, uh, I think we can uh, feel fairly confident that we can, uh, have a higher air quality, uh, than we would have before. Uh, and, and I, I think that we'll continue to learn from that. Uh, I know the science behind that. Uh, we continue to get updates on that. Uh, and so our team's committed to making sure, as Pete said, we've still got the money available in the CARES fund. Um, that certainly would uh, afford us the opportunity if there are upgrades to the systems that we can do school to school, uh, to make sure that the air quality is improved.
Steve, I'm going to jump in really quick to ask about the, the survey. Um, so obviously, when people fill out the survey, if somebody chose virtual, i- it's probably going to be difficult if later on they say, oh, now I want to come back in person. That's probably not going to work because of the planning that it takes. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong there, but then I'm wondering about, uh, if a family says, yep, I want my kid to, to participate in the hybrid model, and then the, the, the kid doesn't like wearing a mask, uh, would they have the ability to go back to a virtual model if they found out that the in-person model isn't what they thought it would be?
It's likely easier for us to move in that direction than the other direction, simply because uh, remember that, that when we uh, meet students' needs in that virtual environment, uh, we may wind up using teachers from different schools, uh, to meet uh, students at, at grade levels across the district. Uh, so finding, if you will, an additional seat in that virtual classroom will be easier than us finding uh, that additional seat in one of the physical classrooms after we've made the distribution. So not saying that we couldn't go the other way, but certainly easier to go onsite, uh, to offsite.
Okay. Um, and then the other question, um, and, and you mentioned that we need to, and maybe just good to reiterate this, that uh, when we make this transition virtual and to, into a hybrid, um, the likelihood of having the same teacher is, may, may not be there. I'm wondering if you anticipate any possibility of a, a student um, being asked to go to a different school than their neighborhood school? Is it possible that uh, instead of, you know, Preble High School, we know is larger? Could it be that we ask a student, uh, if you want to come back to the hybrid model, that instead of going to Preble, you would go to West instead? Is that, do you anticipate that, or?
We don't at this time. Maybe a, a better example might be a look at our elementary level. So if you're in one of our smaller elementary schools, I'll just use Wheat Wehaka as an example. Uh, and, and you choose to go virtual, uh, I can tell you there's almost a certainty that you'll wind up with a teacher from another school. Uh, because as a single-section school, we'll need each of the teachers at those grade levels and meet the needs of the students who are coming back physically to on-campus. So far more likely that you will, in a sense, be asked uh, to move to a different school uh, uh, in the virtual world, uh, than in the, the physical world. Uh, because it, it's likely that uh, we're going to have kids that are going to uh, be served by teachers from different schools, um, at the elementary level. Now, that very may well happen at the high school too, uh, because depending on who's onsite teaching, you may have biology, right? Your, your biology teacher may be a teacher from a different high school if you're in that online environment. Or right now, your biology teacher is at yours.
Okay. Thank you.
I see Rhonda's hand up. I'm not sure.
Sorry, I can't see everybody. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, thanks. So I have several questions, some comments. Um, I want to start with the survey. Um, just some questions on that. How was the default direction determined?
It would be harder.
Who was used to determine that?
It, again, it's harder for us to make the assignments in the onsite model than in the virtual model. So by defaulting to blended, uh, we make sure to uh, ensure that for those children who have not uh, registered their preference, that we have a seat for them uh, in class and that we can plan for that. Uh, but remember, the intent is for uh, each school to reach out uh, to the families in their school that have not responded. Uh, and to try to get a response uh, for them so that we can make sure that they are placed according to their uh, needs and desires and not just the default. But we do want to make sure that we preserve for them that space in the classroom, if that's their preference.
So you're saying if a, if a family doesn't respond to the survey, they're automatically put into blended?
And then we will follow up with them to make sure that's what they want, and if not, then we would move them into the virtual.
And Steve, just, Steve, I just, I want to jump in on that question, Rhonda. Um, when we get back to hear the data, you'll be able to tell us how many people didn't fill out the survey that we're assuming couldn't come back in person, because we have to make sure we have a spot for them in case they want that. But we'll know how many people said virtual, how many people said blended, how many people didn't respond.
Yes, we're, we're going to work. The data team was uh, real helpful with that. They're going to um, disaggregate that data for us. So we'll be able to see uh, those numbers and we'll be able to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
I see Josh, Josh came live on here. So Josh, if you've got something to add.
I talked, I talked about this with the programmers just today. Um, they're expecting their marching orders based on what happens tonight here to um, produce some reporting content so that we can monitor that data live. Not just, not just who hasn't responded, but how many at each grade level in each school are, are opting for virtual.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, um, so we talked about families are going to have a choice. Um, the survey's coming out, right? But according to the blended model, families in seven, eight, 10, 11, 12 grade are not going to have a choice. So how do you anticipate using the survey data with integrity of what choices families are making if, in fact, those, those grade levels are not choosing? How are you going to factor in the results of the survey and be prepared enough to actually roll out and implement the strategies in the classroom? Um, I have a lot of other things to say about leaving out those grade levels, but I'm first of all, just really curious about how you're going to use the survey results without those parents having a choice, because if I'm a, if I'm seeing this and we know there are a lot of families watching this tonight, and I'm looking at this gating criteria, which does not help my child at all, who's struggling on paper, we, we know what that looks like. And I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not certain that I would be one of those families who has a student who has unique needs according to the proposal or is struggling according to the proposal. Um, why would I take this survey?
Well, they do have a choice.
Oh, I was, I was just, I wanted to ask a clarifying question. Um, Rhonda, you said they're being left out. What grade level is being left out?
Well, according to the blended model, right, with those high school levels, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12?
Right. So what, what, what was clarified from last time is that they're, they're on there. They're not left out. They're just coming back a little bit later, and what we anticipate to maybe be a week or two, given the, the current trajectory. So they were left out of the last model. They're in this model, and we're still asking those students, do you want to participate in the blended? It might not happen at the same time as the sixth grade blended, but there is a blended model on there for you. And again, we don't anticipate that to be a huge gap of time. So I just wanted to, you know, clarify that, that we, we did address that. And they should still fill out the survey because there is an option for them to be blended.
They should definitely fill out the survey, but can you touch on, what do you mean by a, a li- like a little bit more time? What would actually have to happen for them to actually be back?
So again, we, we're going to ask uh, all students, uh, and their families whether or not they want to be virtual, and everyone will have that option to choose. And then if they uh, want to be blended, uh, and then the, the issue for blended is one of timing. So when we hit 200, then they would come back uh, onsite if they were in grades pre-K uh, through six and nine. And then they would come back at 100 in grades seven, eight, and 10 through 12. So it's a timing issue. Uh, but obviously, regardless of the timing, we're going to have um, some set of, subset of students and parents who would um, elect to remain virtual. So uh, the question we're asking is, when we hit the gate for your grade level, do you want your child onsite in the blended model? Or would you prefer to have them in that offsite virtual?
Okay, but there's, and I hear what you're saying, but they're still not coming back unless the gating criteria is met.
That's correct. That's for all grade levels.
It's not a timing issue. It's a gating criteria issue.
It's both, right? Because no one will come back until we hit the gates. And then it's what level we set the gates at when they come back.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, can you explain what the difference, it's roughly from what you're saying, it's 100. There's a hu- there's a differentiate, like it's 100, right? The number?
Yes.
100, what is the difference? And why would you not be able to have them all come back at the same time? Like what is, what is the, the, the barrier?
So part of it is to make sure that I, we have uh, the opportunity to uh, meet the expectations in those lower core indicators, uh, in particular in cleaning and, and disinfection to make sure that uh, our staff are able to do that. So this gives us a gradual roll-in for that. Uh, and it also gives us a, a window uh, of some period of time uh, where we can acclimate our sixth and ninth graders, uh, prior to the uh, the upperclassmen in each schools, uh, returning to campus.
I, I just really struggle with this, especially considering, because like tonight, we're, we're changing grading systems because of the kids who are struggling. We know they are, right? Um, we are changing graduation requirements because of that. I'm trying to wrap my head around this gating criteria. Like we know kids are struggling, students are struggling. We know families are struggling. It's not only not equitable, it's this gating criteria continues their trajectory downward. It does not answer the call at all. We know those kids are going to continue to struggle. This does not bring kids who are struggling back into a position for support. So it's, it's very difficult to see this, these numbers when it, it's just interesting because we have, we have human beings and families who are struggling significantly. We've heard from them all. We have data to show that they are. This gating criteria does not answer that call, and it doesn't even show urgency for those families and their, and their students. So I guess I'm, I'm really frustrated with I mean, this gating criteria does not, is not a response to our community struggling. It's not.
Rhonda, can I ask you a question? Because I'm glad you brought this up, because I wanted to talk about these numbers. It, are you saying that we should be adjusting the gating criteria numbers? Would you like to see them higher, more progressive? Or are you, and/or are you saying we shouldn't be using gating criteria at all? So if it's not working, and I hear what you're saying, and I, and I think we've heard that, that there are families suffering, if this isn't the way to get there, how do we get there to help us make decisions about meeting the needs of kids and families? What's your suggestion?
I think we have to make it, we have to determine if we agree that kids being onsite would actually help them not struggle. And we have to decide that if, that we agree that kids are, in fact, they're struggling as a result of the virtual learning. There seems to be, there seems to be a lot out there. Um, maybe not a lot, but there seems to be some discrepancy on, it's actually not. We know there are kids that are not struggling in this format.
Where is there just, who, who's, who's disagreeing with that? I, 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 because I, what I'm hearing from the board is that every, I mean, I believe that people are suffering. I mean, where are you? Do you think there are people here tonight that don't believe that?
No.
Not about the gating criteria, that the belief that like people are suffering?
Um, there is a discrepancy with some. And I would even just go as far as to say as some staff in our district, that the virtual format is not, in fact, creating more problems than it's attempting to solve. And I just want to make sure that I absolutely do not believe that is the case. Um, I, I think we all know that that's a big part of it. Um, that's why we're, we're actually changing grading systems and graduation That's why we're, we're actually changing grading systems and graduation requirements. What my concern is, is the gating criteria itself, it's not that we should scrap it. We know districts who have raised their gating criteria because of the fact that their students and their families are struggling.
Right.
It, it gets them in the door and it gets them the support they need.
So what would you like to see? Like what numbers would you, what, where do you stand on these numbers? What, what would you, what would you like to see a transition to?
Well, first of all, I would definitely look at the lowest risk of transmission in schools. Even with the vaccine, even the lower risk, let's take the bottom two, the lower risk, the lowest risk. Even with the vaccine, we won't be in school next fall if that is in place. And I 100% do not believe that that's attainable. And I think most people would agree that that is not. So that right there to me is just, it's this fantasy number that it's not reality.
Do you think that, I'm sorry, because I, there's a, that middle ground though that gets us to onsite. Do you think it's possible for us to get to 20 to 50 by, by next year? Because that would also get us to onsite. I'm just curious where you land on that.
Full onsite for everyone that is at 50 in this model. It used to be, it used to be 20, which was so unattainable that frankly, I thought it was a little disingenuous to even suggest it as a false sense of hope, but 50 I don't think will hit, I hope we hit 50 next year. I don't think we'll hit 50 next year.
I guess when I look at that and, and I'm not advocating for everyone to be back in person full time right now. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm just, when I'm looking at this gating criteria, I just think that, I, I just I almost don't even look at it because it's so not realistic at all.
Right.
Going to the higher risk of transmission in schools, the, the yellow portion of that, right? Where we would essentially be more, we would be in blended. It doesn't answer the call. I would want that number to be I, I would want that number to be, if possible. I mean, we know districts have raised that number to 600 recently, right? I would love to even think we could raise it to 500, something that's a li- that's a little bit more realistic. We will not get kids in this, kids who are struggling. Families who are, are basically piecing out of this district as we speak, as they are watching this video, right? We know this is happening. They are going to, I mean, it's, it's not attainable. It's just not. And so I'm, I, it's hard for me to sit here and talk in, in in this, this context when I know, I know things that are actually happening. We all do. It's not about probability. It's not about, well, this could happen. Well, this could happen. We know the kids are at their, some of them at their lowest point, not just academically, socially, emotionally. We know the families are spent. We like to marginalize families. Some of, some people do that. I'm not necessarily saying it's the board members, but it's it's influence on the board that is, is trying to marginalize the voices of families who are they, they are begging and pleading with us.
Okay.
This gating cri- criteria does not answer their call at all.
Well, but that's why we're talking about it tonight though, right?
Yep, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm.
Why I wanted to know what your number was because.
That's the number and it's the number, because I think part of it is it's getting numbers, right, our numbers. It's knowing there are human beings outside of those numbers and we know what they're dealing with. And after tonight, this gets passed and it doesn't help them.
Right, but it could, I mean, it, well, that's what we're trying to do tonight is figure, I mean, look, I, I agree with everything you're saying. Yes. We, we heard an hour and a half of families coming. They're in pain. I have been there with my own children, you know, I, I feel that personally. I mean, hearing families cry, what I want to know is from your individual perspective, what is a number? A metric, if this is what we're going to go with, this model, what is the metric that you feel like meets those needs? Because I'm just curious what your thoughts are. So what you're saying is you would like to see us go up to 500.
I would, I would like to see something that's actually attainable, that's going to answer the call. Because this absolutely does not. And when I think about.
So, so I'm, I'm just going to interrupt here for a second because we're, we're going to spin our wheels. Rhonda has made her, you know, I, I think we've heard that feedback. If so, if you have clarifying questions for Steve about how this might work, I think we need to, to ask that.
I'll, I'll definitely ask that. I have some more clarifying questions.
So, so Rhonda, you, you've been going on for about 15 minutes. I just want to be sensitive to time. So go ahead, if you have your questions.
Why am I the only person that gets the, like the cane off the stage when I'm talking? Seriously?
Well, the, the Roberts Rules of Order says 10 minutes is how long you can speak on, on a given issue. So I'm just trying to, to make sure that we're in force. I'm trying to make sure that we're productive. And so you were asking questions, then you went off. Now you want to ask more questions. I just want to keep this moving forward.
Love to. Thank you. So I'd like to know when we talk about in the, in the proposed hybrid model and Steve, you talked about, and I asked you this prior. Grade seven, eight, 10, 11, 12. Students with unique needs, right? Who's determining what those unique not, nu- unique needs are and, and how are they determined? Like who, who are the people involved in that? And how is it determined? Because I, I think that we could probably send quite a few of our students in with unique needs and, and the struggling label. Ultimately determining that and what is the mechanism in place to do, to actually determine that?
So that's a combination of parental input and staff input. So I, counselors, social workers, teachers, administrators. And, and you know, back to your, your earlier point. I would argue that having had the opportunity to sit in with multiple work teams. I don't think there's anybody on our team that thinks that online learning is an ideal learning environment. Or that it's better than onsite. I think exactly the converse. And so I, when we talk about students struggling in that online environment, there are, as you indicated, many, many kids who are struggling. And, and I, we're going to have to balance their needs versus our ability to handle them on campus. And so there'll be a, a process in place for parents to share concerns that they have with the appropriate staff at school. School, uh, uh, staff members will be able to look across that broad expanse of, of children and, and understand their needs. It's going to be a comparative issue in terms of, of some kids may have needs that are greater than others. And then they'll have to make that determination about who to return to campus and if they want to do so.
Okay, so I, so I'm hearing about who's involved in that. But what I'm not hearing about is what makes a child's needs unique? What makes a, a student's needs unique enough that they actually get to be in-person learning? What, what is that unique and, and who determines unique?
Again, we, there, there isn't a set of criteria where you're checking a box on that. That's going to be an individual student to student. Determination, that's going to be done in conjunction with parents and staff. So can I give you a formula that they're going to follow today? No, I can't do that. Because it's going to be unique to, to each individual child and the needs that they face.
Okay, because I have families who are asking about that. And it'd be nice if I could give them some, something to work with. So it's really going to be about parent advocacy and
Staff advocacy, teachers will see students in their classroom that are studying or struggling. They'll be able to refer some of those needs to, to the support team and our counselors and, and then look where the opportunities are to provide additional support.
Okay, but do you anticipate it being like some sort of a, I mean, what if it's not an academic need? What if it's
Absolutely.
Health issue?
Social emotional needs are just as crucial for us to evaluate as academic needs are.
Okay, but I'm sure you must understand that sometimes that's not necessarily you don't always have families who are, you have a lot of families who are in touch with that, but we have students who don't necessarily have that advocacy or the awareness to begin with. And we, we know in this, in this virtual model that it's almost impossible for students to actually have that, that oversight, right? I mean, that's, I think, one of the biggest hurdles is that you don't have that connection enough to sometimes pick that up. And I've heard that from teachers themselves. I'm, I'm not saying this as a person who's in that classroom. I'm, I'm saying this as a person who's heard this from staff themselves. So, okay. I think the struggling and the unique needs. I just really, really struggle with, with leaving any kids out of this at all. I just, I just do. There, I, I yield my time. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey Eric, I just want to make a comment. I just want to thank Rhonda for sharing her thoughts on that. And Rhonda, I hope it didn't come across as that I was being combative. I just, I really just wanted to know what your, your numbers were that you were thinking for the, the metric so that I could better understand like where you were sitting in your decision-making. So thanks for talking through that with me.
No, that's fine. Um, no, that, that's fine. You're not, you're not talking about my body positioning in a meeting or anything ridiculous like that. So I can handle what you're, what you're asking me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, I, I just, one thing I just wanted to point out, I know we've had a lot of people explaining that the CDC says we need to have kids back in school. I went back to the CDC website and the first sentence on the website does say, I'm looking forward here just a minute. Does say that it's critical for schools to open as safely and as quickly as possible for in-person learning. But then as you read through the website, they do point out the importance of looking at the, the core indicators, which are, you know, one of them is the case burden rate that we're looking at. The other one is the key positivity rate. And, and then also the mitigation rate. And so there's a lot of discussion on that CDC website about using these numbers and, and making decisions that are that are based on, you know, community spread and, and things like that. They do suggest that it's important for the community to work to decrease the spread, which, you know, right now it looks, it looks good for Brown County. But again, I just, going back to Christina's question, just, just reinforcing that again, that this is we are following the CDC's recommendations off, off of their website. I also want to give a huge thanks, shout out to our staff. I know our, our teachers have been working hard and, and parents see, see them working. But we also have a lot of people behind the scenes, our facilities department, our food service, of course, we've heard about technology. Just a lot of people behind the scenes, looking at all of these variables, the, the filtration in our schools. And Pete Ross making sure we're, we've got the money and we've, we've ordered the supplies we need. And just a lot of behind the scenes things that are going on. And again, I think, you know, from everybody in our district, I just, I know that everyone's working harder than ever. They're having to recreate the wheel in many cases and putting in long extra hours. So I just want to make sure we, I publicly thank everybody that's, that's put in all this work. And then I just have one quick question. And again, I keep, I keep looking for you know, we, we can't just bring kids back like we would love to do. But I keep looking for, are there opportunities to, that we can provide to students? And one of the emails I think we got today was someone describing how, you know, would it be possible for like a, you know, all the first grade classrooms to be able to go to school? Even, you know, twice a month and be outside and have interaction and, and some time together outside. And, and or, you know, can we, are we, are we looking at some of those opportunities? Because I do think that it's, the more our kids are isolated, the, it, it seems like the, the harder it's becoming for them to stay engaged. And I think that's, that's true, you know, all, all across the board.
Well, I, I think that you're right on track because I know that we've got online. I, I would call them social gatherings that are, are taking place right now.
There, there's an amber alert right now, so everyone's following it.
So I, I know that there are efforts by our, our staff to do those, those social emotional gatherings right now. I know that they've been virtual. I think that when we start to look at this opportunity to return things like activities that are clubs. And certainly we're starting with our high school students, but our plan is to phase those in coming down. That we can look for those opportunities that are outside the academic classrooms. To bring students together for those, those social emotional purposes. I think that given where we've been at the last couple of months with the burn rate being as high as it is. I don't think that there's been much conversation about doing that physically over the last couple of months. But certainly as we see the numbers go down, that's something I'd be happy to take back to the team and start doing some brainstorming on it.
That, yeah, that sounds great. I'd like to see us try to provide some of that as we, you know, hopefully our numbers continue to wind down before we're able to bring kids back.
Andrew, did you want to go next?
Sure, I have a couple of things and then I'll stop and then maybe let, let others go for a bit. So I guess I'll start small. Why it, if the ability to implement five mitigation strategies has nothing to do with when we are coming back to school, why, why are we confusing the issue by putting it on there? I mean, it, it looks like, oh, it, it, it would beg the question of, well, hey, since we're implementing three to four strategies. Is that averaging a light yellow with, with something? And in some models it does, but here it doesn't. It has nothing to do with it.
I think I remember that was adopted by the board the last time around, so we didn't unilaterally remove that. I think it's also important for us to be able to reinforce with the community that we understand the role of these five play, that we're able to constantly reinforce our confidence in doing three of the five, that we retain the opportunity to continue to work closely with the county. To understand when they're going to be able to beat that fifth one. And then I think the last one is to make sure that we are forthright and open with parents about number two on that list, because we don't want to create a false sense of security. Or I, I, in a, generate for parents an expectation that we are going to be able to meet that physical distancing guideline. So I, I, I think more than anything else, it's, again, it was adopted as part of the initial board criteria, and I think it allows us to keep those criteria front and center in our conversations so that parents know what our expectations are.
Okay, so I, I understand that as far as the balancing of, of safety and, which is important and kids being back in school, which is important, they're, they're both important. So it, it bothered me a lot though that we were putting a mech, a, a putting a metric in there that everyone knew or should have known was was extraordinarily unlikely, okay? So unlikely, um, we, we just weren't going to get there. I'm, I'm worried, I'm worried about 50 also. And I've, I've looked at, I have a, on my, on the much larger screen above me, I have like I've, I've looked at, I have a, on my, on the much larger screen above me, I have like a hundred counties that are in the general area of size of ours and I'm a little nervous because I, these, the, this, you know, this nice nice looking trend line of making great improvement in the last couple of weeks, even with the holiday in between. It, it looks great, but unless we've suddenly really changed something, it, it might just be the, right, the absence of horrible, right? There's no if, if, if the vaccine was starting to come on board and that was driving, driving that, I could see us saying, yeah, we might get from six to four and four to two, just as fast as we got from, from eight to six. But it doesn't seem like that happens in a lot of places, but also quite frankly, the um, no one's really come off of, of um. No one's come off of third wave peak as fast as we have either. Like we've come off of it uh just about the fastest. So, so that's, that's good. So. If it uh, if it comes down, if it, if it truly comes down linear, yep, then a little, then sometime in January, we would hit two hundred and sometime pretty fast after that, we'd hit a hundred and then fifty would be a, a reasonable target. But I I'm very skeptical of it, of it staying linear and not, not just slowing down until there's, until there's widespread vaccine. Another thing I'm thinking about is I would imagine, I'm wondering if there's been any conversation about this, there. Um, and I realize there's some people that maybe um might have reservations about, you know, we're certainly doing this vaccine faster than we've done things before. We also have scientific processes that can move faster than before too, but I get that with. Is there a sense that there, when the vaccine is more available, that there would be? I was, I'm imagining myself going into a classroom, what I might feel about personal safety. If the community burden is three fifty today versus if the community burden is three fifty in six weeks and I just had my second vaccine dose because I'm in group one B as school staff. Uh, is that a place where you've, where there's been consideration to um, to looking again? And I talked to some people and was talked out of the idea of a trying to insist on a January mandatory metrics revote because that's that's kind of a yo-yo and there's not that many school days in between there and not much chance that we would hit a metric then anyways. Uh, can you speak to that? And if there was some, some thought to that, would you be recommending different things if there was more, you know, if the vaccine was available, so Steph wanted to take it, you could take it?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that one of the things that you should expect from us is, is this process is evolving. And uh, we did have an opportunity uh to connect with uh the team at the Wisconsin Department of uh Health Services. Um, they were able to share with us that um, they have a high level of confidence that all of our staff members who want to be vaccinated will be able to be vaccinated no later than the end of the school year. Most likely before that, they certainly don't want to over promise. I, but I think that I, uh, it behooves us uh to track uh that vaccination process to understand what percentage of our staff um have been able to get vaccinated. Uh, because I think your question is at, at some point in time, will uh a critical mass of staff being vaccinated influence uh our choice for what the gating metric is? And I think the answer to that is yes. Uh, we haven't gone much farther other than that theoretical discussion about it. Uh, but that is something that we plan to monitor.
So even though, even though the, even though the na, the federal talk is that school staff would be in like a group one B that is, that doesn't mean even three months, it couldn't, it's could be more than six? That's, that's disappointing. I mean, I would rather know than be wrong. But I guess I thought, when I heard group one B, I thought like, okay, one A healthcare workers are getting it in the next three weeks and then a couple of months for one B to get it. So.
That, that's a good, great uh observation, Andrew. I think uh DHS uh not knowing how many vaccines they were going to get and how many were going to be required. Uh, like I said, I think what they didn't want to do when they were talking to us I was give us a false sense of security. They, they could get it done sooner rather than later. I, you know, so they, they did tell us that um no later than. Um, so our, our hope is that it's much earlier than. Uh, but I, I think it's important for us to know that uh, that is a possibility. It might not be for five months until the end of May. Uh, but hopefully it'll be much sooner than that.
Okay, um, I'd like to, I'd like to inquire more and for, for starters, I'm just talking about it for middle school. There's more complexities. I don't know where I stand with regards to it at high school, but I've talked to I would say nobody in the community who is all that thrilled about like six being there for quite a while before seven and eight and nine being there for quite a while. Almost everyone I'm talking to who falls into the, what I would call a balanced realm of understanding that a thousand is probably too high, but now that we're under that, what can we do? Why? And, and I'll, I'll even concede that it is administratively and perhaps even educationally better to not have mixing of models. But I'm hearing overwhelmingly that some school is better than no school. Get me in for a, a day, get me in for an hour. Why could we not wrote in hybrid model if the, or in blended model, if the goal is reduce numbers in a building, why could we not rotate at least for six, seven, eight, holding that question aside for nine, twelve for the moment?
So the big challenge i- is what you're looking at is that high flex model, which is a teacher has responsibility for those students that are both onsite and offsite.
No, six would be on day one, all of grade six is onsite, day two, all of grade seven is onsite, day three, all of grade eight is onsite.
Right, so if, if six is onsite on, on uh day one, oh, you're looking at just the middle level model.
I'm, I'm starting there. I understand that there's, because I know there's significantly more overlapped courses in high school. So I'm just, I'm starting, I'm not saying it's enough for me if we were to change it for six, uh, I'm, but I'm starting there. I'm starting middle school.
I, so I, I can't uh, uh, answer that question in terms of, of I, the validity of that. I, I know that the uh, uh, study group looked at many different models. Uh, to be honest with you, I don't know if they looked at a specific rotation of, of six, seven, eight over those four days of the week. Uh, I, I guess they, I don't know if it'd be six, seven, eight, six, and then the next week, seven, eight, six, et cetera. I don't, I don't know why, how that would.
Well, I think you could, I, you could take, you could, I mean, maybe the, maybe at middle schools, the, I mean, the, the off Wednesday i- isn't necess- especially if only a third of rooms are going to be in use at a time, right? I mean, I would think you would just do, um, and if, if we change to that, um. You know, I even heard, I, I think there's even a place that was uh somewhere around here that even, even nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Each grade went one day and at least, at least it was, it was one. Now, yes, it would push you into the, it would push you into the high flex model, but I, I think some kids, some kids there every day is much superior for a lot of, for a lot of the reasons that families are coming to us about the connection, the social piece that I would take it. If it's, if it's trickier academically, I would rather, I think I would rather take a, a rotation at least in middle school because I think that, that would be a, I think that's going to be a harder climb down this time around from two hundred to one hundred, given that we're still at seven hundred. I don't know if other board members have interest in that. I don't want to take up a lot of time in something that's not going to be um. Um. If others aren't interested, I won't waste more time on it, I guess, but I, I don't, I don't see myself be, being able to support a, a blended, being able to vote for something, knowing that there's a very good chance that seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve might might not get to see the inside of a classroom this year. I'm pretty optimistic that we touch two hundred at some point, but a hundred is a tough road.
So Andrew, I'm just asking for clarification because I, I'm seeking to understand. So are you, what are you looking for our feedback on? Because are you saying you want to, again, have a more progressive gating number here? Or are you, because what I, or are you saying that we need just need to? Yeah, can you just?
Okay, so I don't, blended, yeah, okay, so it, it's also confusing to me. I, the, there, there doesn't appear and I think the, uh, while I see certain benefits, I don't, we went from a point where blended, blended used to mean more, right? Blended used to mean that rooms would be running at half occupancy because of, which would facilitate social distancing. And now it's almost like we're keeping the category though I, it is blended, yep, because there would be offsite instruction on Wednesdays. Right? So it is true that it's blended, but up until tonight, we were talking about blended being a true transitional fifty fifty model, and now we just mean four days a week except for certain grades, right? So it's kind of like, I don't know what, other than at, at the secondary level, we're gaining some, I guess, whatever COVID safety you're gaining by having fewer people total in a building and maybe being able to choose larger classrooms or something. Um, we're not, I don't see what, what COVID safety we're gaining between yellow and green here, between blended and onsite. Not much, right? Just the extra cleaning option on, on Wednesday, I, I guess. So I, I guess what I'm talking about is six, seven and eight would at, you know, rather than just six comes back every day or four days a week at two hundred, why couldn't six, seven and eight come back in a rotation? Uh, because what we're gaining going to blend it is two hundred kids in a building instead of six or, right, or three instead of nine?
Yeah, Andrew, I'll just jump in here. Um, so the, a big piece of information that we don't have yet that would i- influence my decision is how many kids are we talking about? And I don't think any of us know right now how many people are going to choose virtual versus in person. Um, it, it, maybe it's ninety percent and maybe it's twenty-five percent. Um, when we meet next on January eleventh, we will know that number. And that would help me to be able to consider other suggestions that you're mentioning. Um, I, again, there's not many school days between now and then, so I don't feel that if, you know, we pass this today and then get that valuable piece of information, um, to then help me to inform my decision. So for me personally, as I sit here today, um, I, I wouldn't support that. Um, you know, i- once we get that piece of information, January eleventh, I may change my opinion on that. But without that piece of information, I wouldn't feel comfortable making too many changes.
But grade six in the building all days versus grade six in the building, a third of the day is grade seven, a third and grade eight, that would be the same number of people in the building.
Well, right, but the, the other, the thing that I was thinking about is, you know, one of the things we also hear from parents is the amount of uh teacher interaction and how much time are they getting from their teacher? And in that model, um, that pretty much reduces the amount of teacher interaction that they get the, the most. Um, correct? I mean, there, there wouldn't be, I guess, there's, there's different, um.
Well, I guess if I'm a sixth, if I'm a sixth grader at Franklin, I'm in person with my teacher on Monday. And I'm online with my teacher on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then I'm back with my teacher uh, uh in person on.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is I, I don't um say, think that I fundamentally disagree with it, but I would need more time than just, than we're going to have tonight for me to uh fully get on board with that. I would, I would want some questions answered. Um, so again, I'm not saying that I, I would wholeheartedly disagree with that, but I, I don't think I could get on board with it tonight with, you know, just this conversation.
Can I ask a question? And maybe this is not a good, maybe this is a stupid question. Is there a way that we don't use fifty to a hundred for seven to eight, ten through twelve as the trigger for when they come back? Maybe it doesn't have to be that, that number. Maybe it's based on another metric where we say we're going to start with six and nine, and then once we get through X, then we will explore, you know, expanding beyond the pilot, right? Cause six and nine is really a pilot program. It's the first step. How did it go? And then you move in waves. So is that, I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm just trying to think to, to Andrew's point, is there a different way that we can know when to move forward with those grades?
Yeah, I, um.
Go ahead Brenda.
I was thinking that too, um. Because if it's going well and, you know, the numbers are dropping or maintaining stable, but we think we can add more grade levels, but I think that that's, that's something we're going to have to just make a decision on at the time that, you know, after we've brought them in. I'd also, I'd like to comment on Andrew's plan. One of the um thoughts I had as you were talking, Andrew, was, you know, I know we've prioritized six and nine because they've never been in the buildings before. So I'm wondering, because if you go every, every third, then week to week, the kids aren't even sure what day they're coming to school. Um, and I'm wondering if, if, if we have, right now, we have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday on the schedule for the sixth graders. And maybe we bring the sixth graders in on, on Monday and Thursday, and the seventh graders on Tuesday, and the eighth graders on Friday. And then that would give, um, like you said, Andrew, we are hearing from a lot of people that just say, you know, just once a week would be, would be great. It would give the seventh and eighth graders at least once a week, and it would give the sixth graders a little bit more time since we're trying to transis- transition them well into middle school.
And it would also help parents um plan better.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so my point is, uh, I like all of these suggestions, but we're, we're sort of, you know, it's ten fifteen, um, and I, I would want the, the administration to be able to re- react to some of this. Um, so I, I don't know that I would, would be comfortable approving that tonight, but I love that as a concept. And if, if we can, you know, that's diff- this is different suggestion than maybe we've provided at, at other times. Um, so that, that would be my only feedback as we sit here at, you know, twenty after ten.
Eric, I think we should move on.
Um, yeah, so, oh, just, so we could vote on this tonight. Um, and then come back, is, is that what you're just thinking, Eric? And then come back in January and just tackle this new idea part of it?
That would be, yes. That, that would, that would be my suggestion is to, you know, prove this tonight and then come back with this, this idea that Andrew had and, and give administration time to think about it. And uh, you know, make that modification in, in three weeks. Go ahead Rhonda.
I understand it's late, but I mean, there are people who are, I mean, they're just teetering on the edge watching this, this video, hoping that we do something that they know they can wake up tomorrow and feel hopeful about. So I'm willing to stay and talk about this as long as we have to personally. Um, I would offer, and I'm wondering if this is possible, the suggestions that are being made. I absolutely don't support this gating criteria. I think it's a slap in the face to our families personally. But the suggestions that are being made and the survey that's coming out, is there any reason why we would have to wait till January eleventh to do anything? Why can't we call a, an emergency board meeting when we have some numbers?
I mean, it's something to consider. It's how, it's how much time the administration needs to, to put together the suggestions that, that we're putting together. Um, so. I'm not saying that's.
Can I just, just jump in just a reminder that, um, the survey will be open through the twenty-third. We anticipate that we will have many people who will fill it out, but we also understand that we will have. I, uh, students and families who don't, uh, so we're going to need some time to reach out to them. Um, the holidays obviously complicate that, so I, I, I understand, I, Rhonda, where you're coming from on that, but. Uh, it, it's going to take us some time to get some accurate data for you on those, those numbers.
And that's fair. Yeah, that is. I do wonder though, I mean. And I would like, I would like three minutes, please. Because I promised people I would speak to this. I, I, I spoke to a few mental health care professionals today, and they asked me. To do what I could to get our students back in the buildings, and they said, because in their professional opinion. Based on their experience with. Kids, students of our district that they know are from Green Bay. That. They are. They are experiencing some significant stress, depression, anxiety that is resulting in. Drugs, alcohol, human trafficking, cutting, attempted suicide, and we know this because we've, we've received some emails on this. Um, actual suicide. If we can't find any way to get kids who are struggling, families who are struggling. Back into, and again, people aren't saying something normal. They're saying they want something better. So we need to, I think, stop speaking for them. They just want it to be better. So is there anything we can do? Because if I calculate this correctly, this is going to pass. And I'm very sorry for that. But what can we do? Because we know, this isn't, again, we might have COVID cases, we might have to quarantine. We are, we're not working with probability right now. We are working with families who are struggling. Students of ours who are on the edge. Some of them are not even on the edge anymore. They're, they're over it. Um, what can we do for families? Because this isn't going to help them. So what can we do? And, and what does that look like? Because right now. I mean, if they haven't shut off the video already. Um, they don't know what they're going to do tomorrow to wake up and, and how to move forward, so. I'm hoping. That we can talk about that. I know it's late. But. We have to be able to answer that call somehow. This does not do it. And I'm hoping that we can find a way to do that somehow. I don't know what that looks like.
Rhonda, do you, do you want to make a motion that we start school tomorrow with everybody back?
Did you hear me say that?
That would be the only thing that would help everybody.
Well, you know what? If, if the gating criteria. Was five hundred. And that's what was met, sure. I haven't said that the whole time, and I've never said that anywhere.
Well, you said.
I have asked for something that's more realistic.
I'm asking for clarification.
Yep, and I'm going to let you know that. I need to feel that I can actually tell these families that we've all heard from, and it's not just the speakers. It's the hundreds of emails we've received and the messages and the phone calls, right? This gating criteria, it's almost like we didn't have a meeting. I'll just be honest, that's how it feels. So. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, because we can go to bed, we can be annoyed, we can be stressed, we can be all the things, but at the end of the day, there are families out there. Who are. They're out of options for all kinds of reasons, and it's not just the grades. It's all of the things that go along with it. And so. How can we find a way? With a three hundred million dollar budget, mind you. How can we find a way? To help them? That's the question, and because this does not do it.
Is, so, but. The way that we do that is by setting the gating criteria for when we move into blended and full in person, so.
And this doesn't help. I mean, I get that, but this doesn't help them.
Great, that's what I was going to ask you, though. And I actually want to hear from all school board members because you're, you're, are you proposing five hundred?
I would love to raise the higher risk, I mean, the blended, that whatever gets kids into blended. We need to raise that number.
To, you would suggest five hundred?
I would, I would start with five hundred.
Okay, can we, can we go around and, um, maybe Eric, we could ask all the other school board members where they. Fall within the gating criteria for blended?
I would also like to know if, if they don't agree, what, what do you suggest we do for families who are, in fact. Having a really horrible. Result from the virtual learning format, because that's important. That's, that's something that's just hanging out there. Because it's now what, right? That's, that's what they're trying to figure out, and it lies in our hands, and, and we can't, here's the gating criteria and. You know, doesn't look promising, so. Good luck. But yeah, I'd love to know what people think about that.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm happy to speak about that, I guess. Um, I heard from a lot of people about Dr. Fauci and his interview on, was it November twenty-ninth with ABC where he, he talked about it, you know, we heard about. Opening the schools, Brenda spoke about it, opening the schools should be a default and. Um, and then he, you know, people read that and then sent us a bunch of emails and said, Fauci said you should open schools, and nobody read the whole article. Where at the bottom, he talked about opening the bars, you know, close the bars, open the schools and that whole thing, and then he did talk about. To open schools safely, you have to mitigate the risk in the community spread. So, and it's not just teachers, and, you know, we've talked about this. So we. Open our schools with a five hundred community spread. We can expect that we'll have more spread in our schools, we'll have more people quarantining in our schools. And now we've quarantined our food service people. And our food service people. Feed. They feed so many of our families. We have people that depend on that food. And. There are so many cases of this and so many possibilities as to what this looks like. This, this is hard, and I heard it, I wrote it, it's hard, it's challenging. Um, children want to see their friends. This is tough. I ab- it's a global pandemic. World War Two was hard. This is a global pandemic. I talked to P-. Three thousand people die a day from this. We have a million children that have been infected, and I understand that. Children aren't dying from it, but adults are, and we have gotten emails. I got, where are my numbers? I wrote it down. I got three hundred and forty-one emails. Of those three hundred and forty-one emails, this is since our last board meeting. I had two hundred and forty-three people that emailed and said they wanted us to stick with our original gating criteria or stay virtual. I had seventy-three people that emailed that they wanted to go in person. And we are not going to be able to come up with a solution that works for everybody. Now that being said. That's three hundred and forty-one people out of twenty-one thousand people. Twenty-one thousand students. We are not going to be able to come up with a solution of everybody, and I think when we open, we have a responsibility to do it as safely as we feasibly can. I like, I, I like Andrew's idea. I don't know what that looks like, Steve. I mean, we're sending a survey out on Wednesday. What is that? I mean, I don't know what that looks like. If we look at, you know, Mondays, we're going to send sixth graders, Tuesday, we're going to send seventh graders, Wednesday, we're going to send, you know, I. I don't know how you do that with your survey on Wednesday, and if. You know, January eighteenth is the time we can do that. I, I would, I would not be comfortable with five hundred. And, and I said it from the very beginning, what we want doesn't change what's safe. And it's, our, our schools aren't a bubble. Three thousand people a day are dying from COVID, and our schools aren't a bubble. And do I, I don't think schools are super, I don't think schools are super spreaders. But we've heard from teachers at neighboring districts who got COVID in their schools. And they brought it home and they gave it to their entire families. So I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with five hundred. I would be, I mean, if we can swing it, I'd be interested in looking at Andrew's idea around. You know, the sixth and ninth grade doesn't, I, I get why it doesn't feel great to me either, especially is our focus going to be the learning or the social emotional? Because if it's social emotional, then I think what Andrew's proposing has some good ideas, but Steve, I would be curious for you to take that back to your groups. Because that might be something that they've already, you could tell us tomorrow, right? That they already looked at this and these are the issues, so. Yeah, that's where I stand on, that's where I stand on things.
Hey Dawn, can I ask you a clarifying question? Just because I'm curi- I'm just trying to get a sense of everybody falls on gating criteria. Are you, are you happy with the woods in front of you here? Would you be willing to go beyond two hundred? Is there any wiggle room for you? And I don't mean to, I just, I really, I'm just trying to see where we all fall here.
Yeah, I, I can live with two hundred. I, like I said, I can, I can live with two hundred. I, I want. My life is going to be so much better, just like everybody else is when the kids are back in school. I, you know, I want that, but what I don't want is. Us not to be able to feed our, you know, feed our students that are relying on that. I don't want us to be closing down schools because we don't have the janitorial staff to be cleaning because. You know, we've, we have this horrible spread. I don't want to see our community numbers skyrocket because we opened too soon. So I, I'm good with two hundred. I can live with two hundred. Um, I, I would not be able to vote for five hundred. Based on, you know, we've, I've heard from one percent of our student population, but based on that one percent. I wouldn't be comfortable going over that two hundred.
But Dawn, wouldn't those students be able to be virtual?
I'm sorry?
Right? Um, I know that you're calculating numbers of people that don't want to be back, but. We still would give them an option to be virtual. You know, you're saying I've only heard from so many people. Those people still, those people today still have a choice to be virtual. Do they not?
Um, they do, but a lot of the emails, and if you read your emails, a lot of the emails I'm seeing are, it's not the right time to open schools. They are concerned about community spread. I've seen several emails from people who have said, I've lost a mother. I've lost a mother to COVID. I don't think it's time. It's too early to open schools. Please be cautious as you're opening schools. What I haven't received is an email from somebody who says, yeah, my mom died from COVID, and I think we should open our schools next week.
Okay, how many of those, um, emails would you say are teachers versus families that want to be home?
Hold on, I can tell you. I have my spreadsheet right.
I know you keep track of that. That's why I'm asking.
Yep, I do. Give me one, one second. Virtual. And I will take out my employees. So I had a hundred and six people. I had seventy, what did I say? I lost my sheet. I have sticky notes all over my desk here. I had seventy some that were in favor for in-person and a hundred and six. That were not teachers or staff in GBAPS. Um, I also heard from.
How many were teachers? I'm just curious. I know you have the numbers.
Yep, give me one second. I just need to filter. Teachers. Sorry, I know watching me filter and manipulate data is super fun in a live meeting. Um, a hundred and forty teachers.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure we're obviously going to get some numbers from the survey in general about what that looks like, right?
I think that we should probably pause a moment and ask if it matters that these people. Were teachers. They have, I mean, we have a, our district has a huge footprint in our community. And teachers are still taxpayers, they're still parents, they're still, you know. Citizens, they're our neighbors. So if they, if they're. If they're taking the time to send us a letter. I think that we should still give it. The same weight, that's all.
No, it is. It does get the same weight, but it also makes you then consider. When you're looking at staffing, right? And that's why I'm asking, because I'm, I'm thinking about the context of that. If you're, if you're. If you had two hundred some families, it's one thing, right? Because then it's just a matter of the educational format you're putting them into. Versus you have staff who don't want to come back, that's a staffing issue. And that's why I'm asking. To understand what. Wh- who's saying what and, and where they're coming from and where, where they fit into this puzzle that matters. The logistics matter.
A lot of these letters, I think, that were sent to us, um. They weren't actually thinking about that as much as they were thinking about what Dawn said about community spread and risk. And, um, and the, the impact on their own families and, um, their extended families. Um, and, and they were written, a lot of them were written in that context. As, as, as if they, you know, they were citizens first, but also happened to be teachers. That's kind of where I'm, I'm at with those letters.
For sure, but then if you think about it. But they also, teachers have their union. And those families just have the school board. Right? So they don't. They don't have an organization that's out there trying to get them to. Throw out emails, right? They, they don't. They don't have that organized. Group to help them advocate for themselves. So when we start to count. Emails, I, I struggle with that just because of the fact that. The information that they're sharing is powerful, it's real, it's not something that they're concerned about ha- possibly happening. They're sharing what their real-time experiences are. And so I, I don't, I want to make sure it's very clear that I would never minimize that. Even though if it, if it's a numbers game, you know, so many numbers for humans. So it's important that they understand that. Because the more we never acknowledge families and what they need, the less likely they're going to reach out to us. I wouldn't. Because we're not honoring what they're saying. They're not going, they're not going to reach out to us anymore. Why would they?
And, and I'm just saying, we had people on both sides of the issue reaching out to us. And I had more people on the. Keeping our existing, actually, that's what it was. Keep our existing gating criteria, I think, is pretty much what the general message was on those people. That I received from people was keep our existing gating criteria.
And what I would say about that is they had, they had a group that actually helped, helped them. They have a group to organize with them, I should say for them, with them.
Yeah, but I've heard from a lot of, I heard from a lot of people on that side that weren't teachers. And I really, I, and I called out, we have twenty-one thousand students, and I got emails from three hundred and forty-five people. I am.
You probably also got phone calls.
Yep.
And Facebook messages.
Yep. And I logged all of those. Those are, those are in my, those are in my spreadsheet.
But then some of us have a Facebook page, so we get comments, right? I mean, there's, I think it's, it's, it's not a, again, the numbers. They matter, but at the same time. We know the information, we know that people are struggling, we know the data, we're, we're changing grades because of it, right? And graduation logistics. So at the end of the day, we still don't have answers for those families.
So, so here, I, I'm, I'm not trying to, to minimize the conversation, but I'm just trying to find a path forward for us here. Um, if we want to find out if people are going to be supportive of five hundred, then we need someone to make a motion and we vote on it. Um, or someone makes a motion on, um, the, the current model, and we see if the votes are there for that. Um, I can, what I can promise is that this is not the last time we're going to visit gating criteria. visit gating criteria. This isn't the last time that we're going to talk about this and every, you know, some people have said, just make a decision and stick to it. But the problem is, is that we get more information, we get new research, we get new guidance. I mean, this, this changes, this pandemic changes significantly. Um, you know, somebody referenced tonight my comments that I made on August 3rd, and yes, some of those aren't applicable now, or I wouldn't stand by those now because I know things differently today than I did on August 3rd. Um. So with that being said, um, I don't view that whatever we vote on tonight, whether it's this or something else, as being the the final gating criteria that we stand by for, for the end of time is, is, it's where we are at a point in time today. And I really, um, you know, will weigh heavily on me, the, the survey data on, on people who's, who just declare, regardless of what the hybrid model looks like or blended model, I'm going to participate in. Or how many people say, I don't care what you put together until the vaccine is available, I'm not coming. That piece of information is incredibly helpful for me because if it's only 25% of our families that say they're going to participate, that's way less kids than we, than we're talking about. And if, if it's 90%, okay, now it's a majority of our district and that influences my decision. So. Um, I, I just, I, I want to try to find a way to help us progress through this. I don't view whatever happens tonight as being the end all be all, but as a point in time and then um, a, a conversation for another day.
Eric, I respect your, thank you for that, but I, I do want to, just because I asked the question, can we just see if Laura, Brenda, or Andrew have any feedback on the number that they're comfortable with before we move forward? I, I, I just, I sense of what's possible here.
I mean, I, I'm, um. I, I, I agree with Dawn. I mean, it's not, we have numbers, we have guidance from the CDC. Everybody's tired, everybody wants us to be over with, and I'm hesitant to, to set a number, you know, based on that. Um, the one area where, so I'm comfortable with 200, but the one area that I still, and I mentioned this before, um, would feel like I could find some wiggle room is in the 4K to first grade age group. Um, and I'm, and I, uh, um, I'm wondering about that age group. I would see it if we went up even um, similar to what we're doing with the sixth, seventh and eighth graders, move that group up to a gating uh, level of 300. I think, um, you know, as more and more research comes in, there's still question, there's still, um, research that's conflicting, um, about spread and if children spread the disease and things like that, but I think that the research has been pretty consistent that the youngest kids, um, you know, don't spread and that the daycares that have been open and haven't used um, social distancing, haven't had um, COVID outbreaks. So that would be one area I'd, I'd look at. I'd um, again, I think it would, it would also give us that opportunity to bring in just half of an elementary school as a, um, you know, pilot and then 100, um, 100 stu-, or the gating criteria drops to 200 and we and we bring them all in like, like is planned. Um, I'd also, the only other thing I'd, I would add is that I do think that, um. I mean, I do worry about the, um, our kids and, and, and their mental health. But I do think that we've added some things that are, that are new and have been in some of the emails we got, you know, some of the parents were just basically saying, just let them do something. Um, the fact that we've added co-curriculars, I think is, is going to be huge for a lot of our, um, our high school kids especially. Um, and then we get down into middle school, that'll be helpful. We're also really, I think, going to be pushing the on in-person, um, lab classes and things like that. And, you know, I hope, hopefully we have, you know, I would. My hope would be that every, every student we have has one opportunity to come in, um, to school for, for an in-person, um, in-person class. I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but. So I, I do think we have changed some of what we're doing for high school. We haven't just completely said no, we're sticking with what we had and um, and things like that. So I, I feel like those two changes will, will help, not every student, but it will help a lot of our students.
I want to pause a second and, and call on Brayden because a couple of hours ago, he said he wanted to speak to this and uh, I want to give him an opportunity. Brayden, are you still with us? Do you remember that comment?
Absolutely.
All right, he's still here. Oh my gosh.
Yeah. Four hours later. Man, I'm hearing tonight has been, uh, really, uh, intense, I'd say, because I never really have you had so many lives in your hands, like if you think about it, and just so many people coming to talk to this. It, that's, that's a lot, but. Wanted to say that, uh, I wanted to just read something I had had and I was elected to my vice president position because I was smart. I instilled among my peers that I knew what I was doing. And they trusted that whatever I would do would be in their interest. I will follow that doctrine to the grave. In AP government last year, I learned the name for that, the trustee representative. It's not a representative that it's a representative that votes for the conscious, even if it's not popular. So. Another, it, being popular isn't, uh, always the greatest thing and certainly something that I never have all the time in my position, even though it's just some student council position. I, I do get laughed at for some of my ideas. And uh, so one thing that isn't exactly popular in my views is this mental health. Uh, I've struggled with it. A lot of people struggle with it. And uh, the pandemic definitely, I would say, makes it worse. When you look at each individual case and what's been drilled into me through my years through, through therapy is, is, is the sense of individuality, the sense of focusing on yourself. And just the individual, but also reaching out with others. And you can't always know what's going on in some, inside some people's head. And at the end of the day, we are just a school and we're not not perfect therapists. And I would also say that, don't you think some kids' mental health have improved through quarantine? The, the most readily answer is just the form of, of, of bullying. That is, I cannot imagine some of the smiles on some of my friends' faces that, that I've had to defend in the hallway because some jerk wash just makes them feel terrible. Quarantine does have some upsides and it does have a lot of downsides. And, and, and COVID, I, I wouldn't imagine that if someone's parents died or their grandparents died, that that would be a pretty hard hit to their mental health, but that's still not to say that there are issues. Lack of contact is a major issue and, and homework really sucks. Is homework physically possible to get done? Yes. Is it harder? Absolutely. I, I had ADHD when I was young and I, uh, I was actually, I was a problem child, actually. I worked very hard to get where I am today, but that has nothing to do with other people's situations. My ADHD was was bad. But going back to a socially distanced model from what I'm understanding right now, where, where a teacher can't come over to a kid all the time, or, or a kid can't go over to their teacher and show them what's going on. I, I just don't feel like that, that does much for a kid with ADHD. When I had ADHD and when I had depression in first and second grade. My mom was mortified, to say the least. Um. I didn't get out of that without contact with people and we just can't, we just can't solve that for people. It sucks. I mean, we can do something, but some things are just out of control right now. Mental health. We can try to help it and I can only just hope to God that we can mitigate it until the vaccine, until COVID is under control. I don't believe that mass suicides are about to happen, anything like that. I really believe my generation can pull through. And it's not like there would be much for kids with those mental disabilities that could be done. Sadly. Though I'm not special ed teacher, not a therapist, not an epidemiologist, not nothing. It's just, I know that death is permanent. And that you can get an education at a different time. But like, I always look at, at this. It's my inhaler that I, uh, that I have right there every day and it it's because I have asthma. And one of the things that inhalers do is, is they open up your, your throat and with Corona, that inhalers don't help there because it covers your lungs in broken waste and garbage from your body to the point where no matter how much oxygen you put in yourself, there will be a point where just, it doesn't matter anymore. Like you can complain all you want and, and say it's suffering, it's discrimination. And cherry pick successes of, of in-person learning working, but that doesn't eliminate body counts climbing up. It doesn't eliminate the fact that ER and hospitals are bursting at the seams still. I mean, the US is continually having 2,000, 3,000, 1,000 cases each new day and in Brown County alone, we have, we have 2,417 current cases. The vaccine is right around the corner from what we can tell. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's right around the corner. I've put so much effort in to try, well, as much as a senior in high school can put in to try and stop this. And I am not allowed, I'm not going to let the, I'm not going to let a decision throw this all away. I've gone to county board and I've gone to a county board meeting. And I drilled into anti-maskers to try and get people to wear their mask, to try and get a mask mandate. I've, I'm not going to let this get thrown away. Whenever I vote, whenever I speak, I know that while it may not be popular right now, you can't let it get in the way of whether someone lives or dies. So I'd ask you to vote like John McCain, who was a delegate voter and voted with their conscience. So we can look back at history and when body count is tallied, you can say that you weren't part of that reason it was so high. That's all I have.
Did I just say something?
That's all I have, sorry.
Powerful things that I've ever heard at our board table in my three and a half years as a school board member in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I just want to congratulate you for being able to articulate things that I've struggled with. We all have. Um. And I, I don't know, bless you. Very well done.
That's called a mic drop. Um. Uh, Brayden, you, uh, you've given me some courage. I'm gonna propose a motion, um. I'm gonna propose this motion based on the feedback tonight. I'm hoping that it gets us to a place that we can find some common ground. Um, and I'm gonna make the motion on a proposed gating criteria of 250. So just give me a second. I'd propose, uh, I move that the instructional model gating criteria is patterned off of the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for the general education instructional model for grades pre-K through uh, I'm sorry, pre-K through, doesn't have the other one. Do I, do we say 14, grade 14? Um, with exceptions for individual students, free and appropriate public education requirements based on a gating criteria metric of 250 be the basis for the Green Bay area public school districts transition for such identified programmatic model between onsite blended and offsite instructional models that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis as presented be approved. I, just so you know why I'm doing this, um. I think that I supported the 200. I think that there were other people who wanted us to go higher. I know there's been other districts that have proposed 300 and Rhonda, you were into, in, interested in 500, trying to find common ground here tonight. Um, to a place that we can come together and move forward together because I think that's important. If we don't, that's okay. But Brayden, you gave me the courage to, to propose that. And so, thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there a second to Christina's motion?
Second.
Any questions?
Can you actually clarify what?
Andrew, Andrew had his hand raised. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so, um. I think that I, I don't, I don't see a big, a big difference between 250 and 200 ultimately. Ultimately, I'm, I'm not going to be able to be a yes tonight because this, we're not amending it in such a way that we don't have a long, long time that six and nine are going to be in school with, and I I don't see the hope for, I would, you know, much rather see seven and eight rotate in there and maybe we have a chance to, to, um, review that and get the seventh and eighth graders in next week. And we're gonna, I'm gonna pre-request a revisit of rotations in secondary school, uh, for the meeting on the 11th. Um. So it's not, it's not a, a no forever, but I, ultimately I can't shake the, the thought of voting for something that gives a big chance of grade seven, eight, 10, 11, and 12 not, not getting into the building all, all year. But I think we're getting closer to something I can be fully behind.
I'll just say that I'm going to be a no vote on this. I, I, I've committed to the 200 and I'm going to stick with it.
Okay, well, but let's, uh, if, if Rhonda had a question or comments, we'll let Rhonda go and then we'll, we'll vote on the motion.
Um, I just have a question where it says that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis. What does that entail exactly? Like, what is that? It'll just be looked at and then?
So that way, uh, we look at, we actually look at it daily, but I, I, as we see what's coming next, I, we try to provide advance notice. So for instance, with staff, if we could see that the numbers were going in one direction or the other, we try to give them advance notice of when they would come back to campus. Same thing with the, the students in the specialized courses, so they would know if they were coming or going, but try to get them noticed at least a week out.
Okay, thank you.
Um. My question about moving it to 250 is in, in just what that does to the other blended triggers, you know, if, if, uh, 250 was blended for, I guess. just what that does to the other blended triggers. You know, if, if, if 250 was blended for, I guess, in this current model, PK 5, 6, and 9, what does that do for the trigger for 7, 8, and 10, 12? Would that move that up by 50 as well? I mean, I guess we don't know. So that's.
All right, now, one, right now, it's 250 and 100, right? I mean, it's almost otherwise specified, right? Because you didn't change the, you didn't change the 100, you changed the 2 to 250, right?
Okay. Great.
So what? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to amend the motion by adding that on January 11th, there will be an additional vote about rotation of grades in the hybrid model. If that's guaranteed to be in there, I can, I can support this. If it's not in there, I, I need, I need to know that this isn't a, a maybe that we're gonna revisit this rotation. We'll have our survey data, and then we can talk about the it's just really important to me that 7, 8, 10, 11, 12 are not hanging out with, with no hope of seeing the inside of the, of a classroom. And so anyways.
I, I agree with Andrew.
Yep. So Beth, I'm just gonna check in with you to make sure that you're okay with Andrew's amendment and then the original motion. You're good? Okay, so we're gonna, are we gonna vote on Andrew's amendment first? Or do, can we vote on the whole thing?
If there was unanimous consent to my amendment, then it could just be adopted, and then we could vote on the whole thing with my amendment. I mean, you, you could, you could do that. I don't know if that exists, but if there is, you could do it. Otherwise, you have to vote the amendment and then the main motion.
Okay, so is there anybody opposed to Andrew's amendment?
Opposed. I don't think this is something that needs to be part of a vote.
Okay, well, then we, then we, then we have to vote on Andrew's amendment.
Okay. I think we can have this on our agenda in January, by all means, but I don't think it has to be voted on.
It doesn't count if, if it's not in the vote, so.
So Beth, what we need to do is vote on Andrew's amendment of adding, I don't know if you captured the language.
You want to share your screen with the, how you have it typed, just because in the past, there's been a
I'm sorry, I don't have share rights.
You don't have, oh.
Sure you do.
Josh, can you give her the ability to share her screen?
She can share.
Refresh my screen.
Okay. Before we do any of this, I need to make sure you, I, my computer died. I had to grab my card. It says I voted yes. I didn't vote.
We didn't, we didn't have a vote yet.
Well, it says.
I think that was for before. Maybe it was the last.
Way before, wasn't it?
That was the last vote. Nothing has popped up on our screens yet.
Are you sure? That's, okay, it came up on my, I'm having all kinds of fun technology issues. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it, that's what's up on my screen now. Okay. Never mind, carry on.
So, can you see my screen?
Yep.
So this top motion is the one that Christine just proposed.
Okay.
And so the amendment is that we add a vote on January 11th.
To?
This motion will be reviewed on January 11th to vote on the hybrid model. Is that what you said, Andrew?
To vote on rotation of grades 612 in the hybrid model.
But we need to vote on adding that to the original motion?
Yep.
No.
So I, I think, I don't, Beth, I think it's another sentence, because the so I think it has to be a period. And then the board will vote on November 11th.
Gen- January 11th.
I'm sorry, January 11th. I'm sorry. Thank you. And what, can you describe that again, Andrew? I wasn't.
Yep, the, the board will, will vote on January 11th on rotation of grades 612 in the hybrid model.
And so, so let me ask you this, because the way that the motion is worded would preclude you from being able to table the motion or do anything under Robert's rules. So should it be worded, the board will notice for the January 11th Board of Education meeting as an action item?
I don't try, I don't try and understand.
Well, well, what if you don't, there's many Robert's rules as to how you wouldn't actually vote on that item. So you could, it's gonna be listed on the January 11th Board meeting as an action item. But if it's possible, you wouldn't vote on it. Because it could be tabled, it could.
That's still a vote, that's still a vote. This prevents, yeah, this prevents there being some kind of, how should I put it? This does a clear job. If, if this passes, I can tell the community that we are, you know, who are interested, because I've got a lot of interest in this 612 rotational situation. With it passed like this, I can guarantee that it'll be taken up on January 11th. I, I, I wanna make sure that nothing comes off the agenda, or there's some reason it's, doesn't get there, or gets calendared later, or, or something. This forces the issue, and there's no changing of minds about it going on the agenda anymore if I put it here. So I'm putting it here.
So, so then, Andrew, shouldn't it be that the board will notice as an action item for the January 11th Board meeting?
Um.
I'm just concerned about the integrity of the, the will vote. So I'm not sure I'm in agreement with you that tabling a motion is the same as voting on the motion.
Um. If that's the case, I would still prefer to force a vote on the record of whether we're changing the rotations of grades 6 to 12 or leaving it as six, only six and only nine till further notice. So I guess my intent is to force a vote on it on January 11th.
I, I don't think you, I don't think per policy you can do that, though, Andrew. We've adopted Robert's rules, and I'm not certain that.
Can, can we make it say the board will take action on January 11th on rotation of grades 612 in the hybrid model?
Take action on the agenda item of?
Sure. Does that work, Andrew? That way, it gives us, that way, we can, we can table it. I don't know that we would, but it doesn't lock us into, you know, if we don't have enough information, we wanna table it for two weeks to get more information, then we can do that with take action, or we can vote. Either way, we're doing something.
Sure. I, I, but yeah, I, I I just, I worry sometimes that things, I, I would just, I, I think enough time has been spent on it that everyone gets that there is no, if this passes, that there is no opportunity to take this off of January 11th. I think that's pretty well established right now. So I can, if that wording makes people more comfortable, then let's do it.
Beth, say on the action item of the rotation, right, where you have your cursor, on the action item of. Yep.
I think we should say on an action item of the rotation of grades, because otherwise, if it, it theoretically opens up the possibility that if the action item isn't there, then what are we gonna do? So I believe this wording forces there to be an action item of the rotation of grades 612 in the hybrid model to be there. Yeah, so if, if the amendment, if that amendment passes, I'll vote for, I'll be able to vote for the motion. Without the, without the amendment, I have, there's too many negatives for me. So there's still a lot of negatives for me, but this is a start, I guess.
So do we need a second for Andrew's amendment?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, and Brenda seconded it.
Well, no, I didn't second the amendment. I seconded the motion, but I'll second the amendment, too.
Oh, you'll do both. Okay. All right, so we're gonna take a vote here on adding Andrew's amendment of looking at the 612 hybrid model, taking, taking action on that hybrid model. So if you would like that to be a part of the motion, you would vote yes. Go ahead, Beth.
You just opened the online voting.
This online voting hails the whole motion, but it's just on the amendment?
Yes. Beth, can you just make sure that, for the record, that they're only voting on the amendment?
Beth, it's not popping up for me.
Would you like me to vote for you?
Yes, please. Oh, in favor.
Oh, I'm, it doesn't pop up for me either, so I'm gonna be a no.
Okay, our board members have voted. This is the result of the vote. Brandon Hubble, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Powell, yes. McCoy, no. The motion carries.
Motion carries six to one. That brings us back to the original motion to adjust the gating criteria from 200 to 250. You can open that when you're ready, Beth.
Thank you for your patience. It has been open.
Beth, can you please record me as a no?
Absolutely. All board members have voted. Here are the results. Brandon Hubble, yes. Smith, no. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Powell, no. McCoy, no. Or yes, three, no, the motion carries.
All right. That takes us to the next agenda item, which is J-Doll, NEW Cherry Street location. We can have a discussion on it. Is there someone who'd like to make that motion first?
We're on B, which is the school calendar. This sits on my agenda.
Oh. I've got J-Doll, NEW first.
Am I wrong? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
I moved that the purchase of the current residence of John Dewey Academy of Learning and NEW School of Innovation, located at 701 Cherry Street in Green Bay, Wisconsin, for the amount of $2,600,000 as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Would someone be able to talk about the, the financial logistics around how we, you know, how this is working, where this money's coming from, et cetera?
I think Pete's still with us. Pete, if you want, give him just a quick summary on the funding for that.
Sure. The vehicle that is going to be used really does rely on the referendum money that still exists within the school district that can be used for other purposes other than this purchase and displace future Fund X expenditure sources. So while the purchase will be made with Fund X funds, the Fund 40 referendum funds will be used in the future for those purchases that might, or for those expenses that might have been used otherwise. So the vehicle is the referendum dollars, but the actual dollars will be Fund $10.
So in translation, we're not taking from areas where we would be sourcing for staff, for other expenditures. I think it's just important to make sure that's very clear, that that's, that's not where this is coming from.
We are anticipating savings in a number of areas, primarily due to the pandemic. Health insurance is one of those areas. We are still experiencing fewer people going to doctors' offices and having procedures which potentially will allow savings to exist as it did in the previous fiscal year in that account code, correct?
Pete, could you also just kind of tell anyone who's possibly still with us, if there is anybody watching still, kind of the, the yearly expenses as far as rent for this building and what it'll save us? Like, how long will it take for it to be cost neutral as far as when you take into consideration what rent, what, what rent is costing us at this moment?
Well, cost neutral is an interesting term, because, you know, potentially, you could purchase the building for, you know, just a matter of a couple of years and get the original purchase price back out of the building by selling it. So that's one way of looking at it. The other way of looking at it, and this is the way that I would prefer to look at, at this purchase, is that the board is making a $2.6 million investment and getting about a 14% return on your investment. My wife and I are, just as many of you, mortgaging a house and making house payments. Just got a loan for extremely low interest. I would love to be able to turn that money around in arbitrage and make 14% interest on it. So it's unheard of in today's day of having an investment and making 14% return on your investment. It's gonna save the district about $360,000 a year to do this purchase. And at that point, when the board in the future, or future boards would decide to liquidate the property, if that's something that they should do, they ought to be able to get their money out of it. So this is an incredibly wise financial move by the district.
Thanks, Pete.
All right, unless there's any other questions for Pete, we can open up the vote, Beth.
Online voting has been open.
Beth, I'm gonna be, excuse me, I'm gonna be a yes.
Thank you.
Beth, I don't know, can't get back in again. So yes, for me.
Thank you. Our board members have voted before, or the vote, excuse me, was Thank you. All Board members have voted before, or the vote, excuse me, was unanimous. The motion carries.
All right, um, moving on to see the 21, 22 school calendar.
I move that the 20, 21, 22 school year calendar as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Beth.
Online voting has been opened.
Only yes, Beth.
Thank you. Rhonda, do you want me to vote for you?
You're on mute. I don't know if you said...
It should have worked.
Perfect.
Pete, Laura, see if you're logged in. Is, are you sure you're logged in? Is that why you're not getting the pop-up?
You're, you're muted.
At this point, we got two votes left, so we can troubleshoot tomorrow.
No, I'm just, I, I've got three different devices up and going, and none of them are popping.
Okay.
The, the motion carried. Uh, all seven Board members voted in favor.
Beth, um, all right, next is the suspension of board policies for graduation requirements related to COVID.
I move that the Board suspend Board of Education Policy 3445.6 relating to high school credit graduation requirements, and that the Board adopt for purposes of the 2020, 2021 school year only, the graduation requirements set forth in Wisconsin Statute 118.331A as the minimum graduation requirements necessary to receive a high school diploma as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, go, go ahead, Rhonda.
Can someone just give an overview of specifically what the changes are? Please, thank you.
You bet. Um, the premier area public school district has a higher standard for graduation than the state of Wisconsin. We currently have a requirement of 2022 credits, state of Wisconsin, no fewer than 15. What we're requesting of the Board is to allow us some flexibility so that any seniors that may have been inadvertently affected by the pandemic will be able to work with them and their families to make the best decision about graduation requirements, um, using the minimum of the state at 15.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Um, is that the, i- is that the, was 118331A, the, is that a new post-pandemic statute, or was that always there, but us along with almost everyone else went higher? I thought, I remember the state, because I, I, I guess maybe, uh, times I thought the state was increasing certain things, like this goes way back, but I remember the state going from two to three on math and two to three on science, thinking that they were, um, adding rigor, which in, with regards to core academic courses, I suppose they were, but was it always like only around 15? And when they bumped up, they didn't bump the total, they just bumped the specifics? You're muted, Vicky. You're on mute.
Thank you. I, I don't know the historic on that one, Mr. Becker. Um, we did outline in this, uh, um, that's for suspension and the resolution, we did outline what the current Wisconsin requirements are. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have...
That's, that's okay, I can... Yeah, that, there used to be, I just wasn't sure if this was like, there was like the alternative diploma with fewer credits, and then, then the regular. Okay, I guess not, probably nothing that will be... Where, is this a continuation of what we did last year?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Can I just do a roll call vote?
Yep.
Um, Brandon Hubbell?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Sitnikow?
This vote is really stressful for me to take considering the situation, but especially because I feel like we are, the adults are continuing to make things more difficult for kids. I don't personally want to do that. For our students, um, I'm not interested in making their lives more difficult than we've already helped that along, I believe, enough. So I'm going to vote yes on this.
McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you.
That everybody, pass 7-0. Um, last in this section is the grading changes.
Um, I just have one thing on here which I, I think will probably, I think to meet the spirit of what we're doing with, I mean, a big part of this is allowing more time for incomplete. Um, I think that I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of the motion, but right now, the co-curricular code treats an incomplete and an F as exactly the same thing. And I think if we're doing this for a year, I think incomplete need, I think the co-curricular code penalty for incompletes, uh, needs to be suspended during the time that we're doing this.
He can make that as an amendment to the motion.
Co-curricular code needs to be suspended, Andrew?
Sp- specifically, just specifically that, um, in code, that with regards to incomplete, that incompletes, uh, incompletes would not be considered as the same, as, incompletes would not be considered as Fs for this year in the co-curricular code.
Uh, my only concern is, in, I think we need to do a little bit more research, and I don't think Tim Flood is on the call. WIA has a, has a minimum of what you have to have in your code, and I would want to make sure that that is not prohibited by the WIA's code. Our, our code goes to both WIA sports and co-curriculars, so it doesn't break that out with respect to how it applies. I, I would need to look at...
Okay, well, I would, I'll settle for a binding, a binding promise of the issue of incompletes in the co-curricular code being on, on the agenda on the 11th in lieu of an amendment tonight.
Beth, can you make sure you got that so that we can discuss with Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we still looking for someone to make the motion?
I move that the options of no grade slash limited enrollment, incomplete and pass, in addition to the grading options outlined in Board of Education Policy 345.1 and Rule 3445.11 for secondary schools during the 2020, 2021 school year as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, wasn't there going to be some additional information brought forward, Steve, for this? Did I read that mail wrong?
We can certainly share additional information with you. Uh, Vicky has been working with the team to, to, uh, look into some of the concerns that were out there. Do you have some specific questions you'd like her to address?
Um, basically what I had emailed about a few times, um, just hoping to have some context of the reasons why we are doing this, or we're being asked to do this, um, a little bit more, I guess, transparency around that graph that's out there, the numbers on that. The claim that it was double, when actually the, the math actually looks more like double and a half, really, but just, we're being asked to do something with relation to grades. Why are we being asked to do that?
Sir, we did a high-level overview of how students are doing overall, uh, taking a look at the first six weeks of the school year in comparison to the first six weeks of last school year. And what we would discover was that the number of individual Fs, rather than, uh, number of students, the individual Fs had increased at a rate that was high enough for us to want to come to the Board and provide some flexibility, again, to our parents, to our teachers, to our students, for some options, not really flexibility. Um, this does not lower the bar. Um, as you'll see from the request, what we are asking for the opportunity to do, although there is some flexibility at the schools to actually do some of this on their own, um, choose, uh, no grade limited enrollment if, um, the student hasn't been attending for a variety of reasons. Uh, Josh and his team have done a wonderful job to work on the technology needs of our students, but in some cases, students still struggle. Uh, in incomplete, um, that's where we think need the, the most support from the Board, extending the period of time for which a student can turn in late work. What we're suggesting is that we look at August as being the deadline. That way we can potentially work with these students over the summer, so, um, kind of like an extended school year for students that were struggling, um, give them an extra opportunity to get that work in. So we would do an incomplete in that regard, or, um, if after a period of time of, I believe we're going with one month, um, grades are posted, and, uh, parents have an opportunity, a student has an opportunity to reflect with their teacher. Uh, they can also choose a pass instead of a level grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are no other comments, uh, Beth, do you want to do roll call again?
Yeah.
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Warren, I.
Shelton?
I.
Sitnikow?
Same commentary. I think it's a Band-Aid. I'm really sorry that we're in, putting kids in a position where we have to do this, but I'm going to vote yes.
McCoy?
Hi.
All right, pass 7-0. Um, agenda setting for meeting schedule. We've had several things come up tonight that we know we'll talk about at the January 11th meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? All right, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
I.
opposed? Carried 7-0, and that concludes the school board meeting. Thanks, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.